I can't see quite all of your notes, so if there's anything I need to see. If you're making a gesture, I may not see it, is what I'm trying to say, so. I saw that one line, thank you. So tonight, this is our agenda that we proposed, and I'll go relatively quickly through the first few items. As I know, there's a lot to discuss about the land use map. There are hundreds of people on the call today, and we do have time for community feedback in the agenda, but I want to confirm with Chair Mitchell, can you confirm this is the order you'd like to proceed tonight?
The order is good.
Okay, great.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to ask Joe to do, Rory, you've got something you'd like to ask Joe to do, what is that?
Yeah, just to enable the annotation feature in Zoom so that I can draw on the map. I know last time the team had a difficult time just describing places they were talking about where, you know, with that feature enabled, you can just kind of circle it.
Sure, and Jenny, since you are controlling the screen, do you see an options at the top of your screen where you can allow annotations?
Oh, let's see here.
Because since I am not sharing, I do not see that option on my end.
Sorry, sorry, I'm trying to find my way around this Zoom screen here. Okay. Yes, so Rory, you're talking about just for me to annotate, or were you looking to enable that for others as well on the planning commission?
I think it would be helpful for everybody to have it, if everyone's okay with that.
You didn't hear any objections, so yeah.
I believe I just did that. So if we get to a spot where you'd like to annotate and you can't, just let me know. But before I dive into the agenda tonight, I want to note that this is a draft that we're presenting, chiefly the future land use map draft. And we'll be taking feedback received from you all tonight. We're excited to have this discussion with the planning commission. We also have a discussion with our steering committee tomorrow at 4:30 until 7:00. But yeah, this is a draft, and we expect there may be adjustments that are made to it. So I just wanted to clarify that for others who are who are on the call today. You know, if we do make revisions to the the map after tonight, the future land use map, we will make it clear how, where and why those were made. So we we met with you all last, well, in a more extensive way on June 29th, to give a recap of the community input at that point, but I want to briefly go through what we spoke about at a high level. So as you know, and as many on the call probably know, from May 3rd to June 13th, we received community feedback, the draft comprehensive plan, including chapters and the future land use map, which was the May draft at that time. And we had over 2,300 interactions, that's what I'll call them, which is emails, you know, WikiMap comments, survey form submissions. And we have compiled that input we got, we summarized it in a summary document that's now posted on the website that we sent out by email. There's a link to it there at the bottom of the screen. And that's, that includes a summary of all the survey information. Last time we spoke with you on the 29th, that was a summary of what we had heard at that point. Or what we had sort of summarized from what we heard at that point, but given the the short amount of time between when the engagement period ended and when we met with you, there were a few updates, but generally the themes stayed the same. We also posted a response to commonly asked questions, FAQ key document, and so if you go to the website, you can see a link to that as well. And I want to note, we won't go through all the feedback we got again tonight, but we will talk, once we get to the chapter piece and then the future land use map piece. I'll briefly summarize what we heard about each of those those components, but since we've already spoken with you about community feedback, we won't focus on that tonight. Before we get to that, I want to touch base on the schedule. So we met with you on August 10th. I popped into your meeting to review the timeline for next steps for the rest of the comprehensive plan. And so this graphic is just the graphic representation of the timeline we talked about, which includes an October 12th joint planning commission hearing with council, and then a council hearing in November, November 15th. As you know, we're also scheduled to be with you in a couple of weeks from today to discuss the chapters, particularly the implementation chapter, but also together your feedback on other chapters. And we do, as we discussed at the last meeting, we have set aside September 21st, I believe it is, as a potential additional work session if needed. So that wraps up sort of the intro piece. Before we jump into the real meat of things here, pardon me as I take a drink of water. Lot to say tonight. Um, so the first thing I'm going to talk about is the chapter, and we're not going through all detailed chapter revisions tonight. But we want to go through some of the highlights. And so as a reminder, there are seven topic-specific chapters in the comprehensive plan. There's also going to be an implementation chapter, as mentioned. The chapter we're talking about tonight is the land use urban form and historic and cultural preservation chapter, which for time's sake, I'll just call the land use chapter, but you know, all of those pieces, land use, urban form, historic and cultural preservation, and thinking about how they're balanced is an important part of of this chapter. The reason we're really focusing on this chapter tonight is that I want to make it clear that the land use map that we'll be talking about does not sit on its own in the in the plan. Land use map is connected to a variety of not only goals and strategies, but also this overall chapter vision statement about what Charlottesville wants to be in the future related to land use, urban form, and historic and cultural preservation. So just wanted everyone to keep that in mind. There will be details about, you know, supporting implementation of the future land use map that are described in the chapter. And that'll be reviewed with you as we move forward here. So this slide shows some of the feedback that we received related to the chapter, the land use chapter. And so in the table here on the left, you can see some themes from the survey. And then on the right, themes from emails and the WikiMap and other ways we received input. And we reviewed this with you when we met last on June 29th, but again, this has evolved slightly in sort of numbers, but I think the themes have the themes have stayed the same. So if you look at the the survey, the majority of respondents that we heard from, but not all respondents, were people who live in neighborhoods that are currently mostly single-family neighborhoods. And they, there was a lot of expression of concern related to community character, development scale, and whatnot. But, you know, I don't mean to diminish anything by saying whatnot, just for time's sake, summarizing. But I want to note, there were also a lot of comments in support of more housing affordability and density in the city in the survey as well. Among other comments that we heard outside of the survey, those, those again are here on the on the right, and we heard a lot of different comments across the board, but some of the top comments there are in those first few bullets, which were sort of having context-sensitive planning. I'm sorry, there are two bullets that excellently combined. The city commitment to enhance multimodal infrastructure is a separate bullet. And that's a big one that we heard a lot about from a lot of people that the people want the city to commit to having improved infrastructure for walking, biking, transit, you know, getting around town without necessarily needing to use a car, even though we certainly recognize some have a need or desire to do that. I won't go through all these, but you can see this, the sort of variety of topics that we were looking to consider as we moved forward with revisions to the plan, to the chapter. So I've I've listed out on this slide some of the revisions that we're finalizing now. There's sort of been three categories here. One is clarifications, where we're refining information. Some are additions. And then there's one other note on there. But in general, some of the major things we wanted to clarify in the chapter were how the strategies and goals really connect to and support the future land use map, which again is a piece of the chapter. So that there was connections to the the map throughout the chapter, we want to make that more more clear. We also want to tie it more clearly to the affordable housing plan, the map and the affordable housing plan together. And so that happens both in this chapter and in the housing chapter. We also added clarified emphasis on some of those principles of design that improve walkability, connectivity, livability in the city. It's important to us that that comes along with additional development as well. It's important to the community based on what we heard. In terms of additions, you know, we've mostly been discussing the future land use map in separate documents, but that again will live in the in the chapter, so we will create a section introducing the map in the chapter, having the category descriptions in there. We've also added a discussion of urban development area, that sort of designation for the city. And we have added some potential new small area plan locations, and so we'll talk, there's a slide that shows those in the presentation. The other note here is that we have worked with city staff to make updates to the the narrative appendix that goes with this chapter, which includes descriptions of sort of historic resource processes and design-controlled districts, all the these sort of pieces that are very detailed, but that play a big role in implementation of the the future land use map in the city. So these are some of the the major updates. There are updates throughout the chapter. Next time you see a version of the chapter, it'll be redlined so that you can very clearly identify where changes have been made. Right. So with that, let's dive into the future land use map. So as you know, this is the draft map we shared in May of this year, and on which we received comments during that comment period through June 13th. So for those who aren't familiar, who may be on on the phone, or just to sort of recap with this May draft, our goal with this was to support the overall community goals of more housing opportunities throughout the city at a variety of scales to support the affordable housing plan. So that's looking at both multifamily opportunities as well as additional, or I should say multifamily opportunities at a variety of scales. One of those major changes that we sort of kicked off discussion of at this point was changes to the sort of base residential land use. And so at this time in May, you can see the light yellow general residential, what we were talking about at this point was allowing up to three units on those sites. And a lot of those right now are currently zoned for a single-family use only. So that represented, you know, sort of a potential tripling of what was allowed in in those areas. There are two other sort of residential-focused land use areas shown on here. The, sorry, I just remembered I have annotation power. The tan areas, which you can see along the corridors, as well as along sort of in some nodes throughout the city around some of the main amenities such as schools and parks. Those are medium-intensity residential uses. And in May and June, we were talking about those allowing four to 12 units, which again represents a departure from what is in most of those areas today, what's allowed in most of those areas. And then the other residential category we were discussing was the higher intensity residential, which is that darker brown residential land use. For example, you can see here around JPI. Looking at some of the other land uses that we were talking about at this time, there's neighborhood and urban-scale mixed-use nodes in corridors, and those are the pink and purples that you see on this map. And the intention with these was to provide opportunities again for additional housing, maybe at a a higher intensity than some of those other areas. But at a sort of a variety of intensities, but also allowing for commercial uses or retail, sort of a wide variety of different types of uses throughout the city. I want to note, though, those are not the only areas where commercial uses would be allowed, though even the May draft did propose including some opportunities for retail and commercial throughout the city in all of the residential areas. And the idea was that sort of the zoning ordinance would define where that might be most appropriate in which types of zones, but that was the vision in May and continues to the revised version. In addition, they also, the dark red is the downtown core, which is, you know, a mixed-use area. And the sort of mauve purple, purple-pink color of the dark, sorry, we should have really had a better name for this color. These represent what we're calling business and technology areas that are also allow for mixed use, potential additional residential uses where where feasible. But also they do allow for continuation of some of those uses that might be there now, some light industrial, commercial uses along with that potential for mixed use. I want to be clear that we, when we're talking about sort of nodes and corridors in the city, we do have those land use categories that are called mixed-use nodes, mixed-use corridors. But when we talk about having a development pattern that's sort of node and corridor-centric, we're also looking at things like residential corridors, you know, nodes of residential intensity. So I want to be clear about that because I in developing this map, we did take this sort of node and corridor approach to this, which is something we've talked about throughout this process. Along with that sort of node and corridor process, we've looked at how can we put potential intensity near schools and your parks? And that's been important from the beginning of this process. So this was the May version of the map that we shared with the community. And we've talked a bit already about feedback received at that time. So I won't, I won't belabor any of this, but I will clear that line from the PowerPoint. I want to, I think it's important to note that of those comments we got, you know, many, the vast majority of comments we received supported additional housing affordability in the city. There was not always agreement on how to get there, but there was seemingly widespread agreement on on the topic in general. We also have listed here in the blue box on the left, some of the general ideas that came out of feedback. Some of the top comments were received were ensuring displacement protections for black and low-income residents, considering areas for additional infill development in currently single-family zone areas, focusing on homeownership opportunities as well as deeply affordable rental housing, and considering up to four or five units in the general residential category. In terms of, and I want to note that in no way represents everything we heard, but those are some of the main themes that we saw come up in many different places. In current, uh, in terms of the sort of concerns that we heard, you heard some of them in the chapter discussion. You know, when people reacted to the chapter, in many ways, they were reacting also to the future land use map. We heard concerns about some locations of the mixed, medium-intensity residential and the mixed-use nodes. We heard concerns about the city's ability to plan for infrastructure in advance of development, and that includes traffic, transportation, utility, stormwater, other types of infrastructure. We've also talked, we talked already about sort of concerns about character, but I do also want to call it there were concerns about student housing, both in terms of, well, mostly in terms of, you know, if we build additional housing, will this, will this be only students that can live there? You know, how do we, how do we figure that out? And so one thing we noted in the FAQ is that students are an important part of Charlottesville. You know, they often become long-term, you know, residents, but it is important for us to see how, you know, university, both as a as a draw, but also as a impact on affordability for other residents in the city. So that is something we're thinking about as we move forward. I've also note that one of the major themes we heard in terms of the questions listed on this slide was, you know, concerns about how this map supports affordability. We heard a lot of people who said, density does not equal affordability, and we 100% agree with that. You know, the land use map alone will not get to the housing goals that we have for Charlottesville, that you all have for Charlottesville, that the city has for Charlottesville. So I just wanted to be clear, we we agree with that sentiment. So I was mentioning the community feedback. I wanted to talk through briefly another piece of feedback we received, which was the Housing Advisory Committee discussed a future land use alternative framework that you see here. And we have spoken with representatives from HAC to make sure we we sort of understood what was being proposed. And we have sort of considered it, and we'll talk more about, you know, in the presentation, how we've you know, sort of reacted to it. But I want to go through some of the major things we heard here. There was a call to potentially establish a low intensity, low intensity below general intensity, general residential intensity, sort of as a land use category to help protect those historically black and low-income neighborhoods that we, you know, heard there was a community concern about. You can see those here highlighted in orange on the map. There was then an idea to, outside of those low-intensity areas, maintain general residential uses outside of those as a base residential, and then allow for additional density anywhere in the city if it met certain affordability requirements. So allowing for medium-intensity or high-intensity residential if it met affordability requirements to be determined. I'd also called for defining of affordability thresholds. And there's additional information that comes with the framework as well. I would suggest if anyone's interested, you can view the July 13th planning commission meeting recording. I think it was a good discussion that happened. So talked a bit about what we heard in a variety of ways, so I'll go through the the revisions to the map. And again, this is our draft map proposal. We look forward to hearing what you all have to say. I want to note, we've, we've certainly heard a lot of feedback already about this. We've received hundreds of emails, and I know the planning commission has as well. There are 260 people on the call right now, and letting you know the number in case you can't see it for those who are on. So we know there's a lot of interest in this, and we look forward to talking about it. So this is the August 2021 version of the map, and I'll let you all look at it for a second while I get some more water. All right, so I'm going to walk through some of the map, so overall adjustments briefly. And then we'll get into it in more detail as we go. But one important note that was called to my attention is, you know, as you'll see, we have a discussion of identifying some sensitive community areas on the map, and they're not shown on this map. So I want to make it clear that when you see those in later slides, please recognize that our intention is that whatever those may end up, if they end up being in the the document, they will be a part of the future land use map. There'll be a layer on the map. They're really important. So I want to make sure that was clear. In terms of changes that we made on the map, let's see, would it be easier if I went to the comparison slide? Okay. So let's see, let me turn on my annotation. So there are some major highlights of changes I want to highlight here, and then in a couple of slides, we have some more detailed information about changes that were made, so we can go through that at that time. But overall, in terms of map areas, not the descriptions themselves, but the map areas, you can see that this generally follows in many ways the same pattern of of development that we were showing in the previous version, but we have made several adjustments. Starting with the sort of mixed-use areas, we have reviewed the location of the, those sort of pink and the, well, mostly the pink neighborhood scale nodes and corridors. And in several cases, including around the barracks rugby area in Greenbrier, as well as the rugby have mixed-use area there. We have pulled back on those. And part of the reason we did that was that the sort of level of mixed use we were thinking of in that area in some ways can be really achieved through the medium-intensity residential use in terms of the commercial aspects. Again, those that medium-intensity tan color allows for and will encourage in certain locations incorporation of neighborhood scale retail and commercial. But it does remove you know, some potential for higher intensity at those locations. And part of the reason we did that was, I mean, I think it's no secret, we've shared with you that we've heard, we heard a lot of comments pushing back against those. And one of the main themes of those comments was not only concerns about height, which were prevalent, but noting that the barracks corridor, excuse me, the 29 corridor is a large node in and of itself on the map. And that represents a great opportunity for a variety of uses, including commercial uses, which are already there, as you know, but also to incorporate infill residential at a fairly intense scale. There's, again, we'll go through some of the other changes, but there are two more I want to mention here in terms of the residential areas. There are two spots where we made more major changes to the medium-intensity residential. One is in Belmont, we heard a call to, from, from many residents of Belmont and others to look at Belmont as an opportunity to increase medium-intensity residential. And so we have considered that, and we actually in our March 3rd, our March draft of the map, our very early draft, we had included Avon Street as a medium-intensity corridor. And we have added that back because we believe as a direct route to downtown makes a lot of sense. We've also added the Elliott Avenue corridor is a residential corridor in the city. We've made some adjustments in north downtown. Part of those adjustments were made to better reflect this sort of corridor concept that we were putting forth. And part of the reason for that is that we think that can really better prioritize areas for these bicycle, pedestrian, and other sort of multimodal improvements that we think are really important to get people around town safely. The other place we reduced medium-intensity residential is in Lewis Mountain. And that's a fairly significant change on there. We've reduced it from much of Lewis Mountain to Alderman Road. And one of the main reasons for that is similar to north downtown, where we wanted to make it more clear, take a more corridor approach to that. But I want to note, particularly in Lewis Mountain, but throughout the city, there are parcels that are quite large, and there are opportunities potentially, you know, people may desire to subdivide parcels. There are opportunities here where if if it's a desire to take advantage of it, there are, there are still ways to to provide more intensity in these areas. But again, we we look for a discussion on this. So it's important to me that we talk about this sensitive communities concept before we dig too much into the other details of the map. You know, a really clear theme that we heard from community input was concern for certain neighborhoods in the city that are most sensitive to displacement risks. And so we have identified what we're calling sensitive communities, sensitive community areas. We can talk about what the right term might be for that. But these areas are areas that are proposed for additional tools within the zoning rewrite process. You know, this could be things like incentivizing affordability levels. It could be allowing less intensity in these areas as well as, you know, prioritization of funding and other initiatives for affordability. And so we've outlined those here. And we do have a slightly more detailed sort of methodology in the appendix slides, but not much more detailed, but I'm happy to answer questions about it. In general, we looked at In general, we looked at data from the ACS 2018 five year estimates and the two things we looked at were household income. Percent in a block group that had less than $30,000 a year in household income. Which equates to about 30% of AMI area median income. And then the other factor we looked at was percent of people of color, which we defined as. Percent of the community that was not white, non Hispanic, so. When we, we put that information together for these black groups, these were those that sort of jumped out, they had the highest sort of. Points in the analysis that we did. I want to note a couple of things, we know the black group is large, these black groups are much larger than maybe. Actual areas of sensitive communities might be, and so that's one thing we're thinking about as we move forward here. But we also know there are a lot of other factors that we'd like your input on about, you know, things that you might like us to consider with this as well. That could be not only housing costs, it's for change over time. It could also be looking at sort of what's on a site now in terms of how likely is it to be redeveloped. And also things like age, you know, we're thinking about aging in place with this. Disability status. And then. One of the key things that jumps out to me is the impacts of historic land use decisions. We talked about sensitive communities where this is looking at who's there now, but. But it's not looking at who was there many years ago, who's not there anymore. Because they've, you know, decisions were made, I'm thinking of Star Hill, Gospel Hill, I know there are potentially others as well, so. I just want to flag that as something that we've. Noticed with this, but we wanted to take this initial sort of data driven approach to have a discussion about it. There's also a slide with our sort of response to the hack framework and I'm sorry, it's all text, it just seemed easier that way to get it out there. But so I'll go through this really briefly, I'll try not to read the whole thing. In terms of the, again, this is the Housing Advisory Committee's future land use framework. That was discussed. Are the sort of main points from that are on the left and then our responses on the right. In terms of establishing a low intensity residential land use for those sort of at risk communities. Again, that we've, instead of. In the future land use map, reducing the allowable intensity in those areas, we are proposing this sensitive community overlay. That could then. Potentially include less development intensity in the zoning. But you know, we have heard. Sort of mixed opinions on whether allowing less development in those areas would be. Preferable for those who may be in those at risk communities, we want to make sure we're not impacting potential wealth building in those communities, for example. For those who own property. So that's, that's one thing we're thinking about. In terms of number two, we have maintained general residential as the sort of base lowest intensity residential land use. Including within those sensitive community areas. Although there is an important change to that is that we have added a fourth potential unit. To that general residential land use and we'll talk about that on the next slide. With number three, the sort of hack concept, again, both with three and four, the proposed concept was to outside. Of, excuse me. The concept was that if a certain level of affordability was. Achieved, then medium intensity or high intensity residential could be allowed anywhere in the city if it achieved that level, the level is established. And so as you've seen, we've maintained largely sort of corridor, both mixed use and residential corridor focused. And community amenity focused approach to these medium intensity areas. And we've also added. You know, we've tried to make them more clear that an affordability requirement should be strongly considered for these areas as part of the zoning process. Let's see here, in terms of number five, there was a request to allow for gradations of middle intensity or higher intensity residential throughout the city. And our note on that is that the zoning process will. Break the land use categories down, it's into smaller zoning areas, which will establish those transitions, so we've not broken that down further on the land use map. And then with number six, defining unit affordability thresholds. We've noted that the inclusionary zoning process and other zoning mechanisms will establish those thresholds, but I would also note that the. You know, affordable housing plan does establish through a funding thresholds that I think. Will be tied to the ways that the city is spending funding. Which could play through in the land use map. Alright. Still with me? And I'm talking at you a lot, you don't have Ron to break me up. So I want to go through, I went through the map changes and again, we can, we can walk through some of those key updates in a second, but I think it's important to reiterate some of these. Category changes, the changes, the descriptions of the categories that we've made. But you see here is the general residential and the medium intensity residential, I know it's a lot of red, but the red was meant to call it out for you what we've changed. So hope that helps. In the general residential, as I mentioned on the previous slide, we have. Added a fourth potential unit in those areas if the fourth unit is affordable. We've noted that the zoning tools in zoning process will sort of regulate what that affordability level is. As well as sort of what. The maximum allowable development might be on any given parcel, there may be those gradations we mentioned. We've another change we've made in the general residential area is. Instead of having a description of up to three and a half stories, we've reduced that to two and a half stories and we believe that's consistent with. Most of the housing throughout the city. And what we're looking at with that is allowing up to two and a half stories and 35 feet. And you know, we believe that on the parcels in the city, you can achieve, you know. With the size of most of the parcels in the city, you can achieve, you know, a good size of units with, within those parameters. I will ask if Lee or Christie wanted to clarify anything about that. Alright. Well, I'll let you jump in later and do that if you'd like. I know they, Coaster has a lot of experience with zoning codes to. You know. Make sure that the, not only this sort of. Form requirements, but also the other. Requirements related to zoning codes, think of parking, think of setbacks and whatnot, that those really support achieving these density levels as well. In terms of medium intensity residential uses. We've added that we're thinking these would be sort of house sized or house scaled. In many ways. We've added that previously, this was listed as four to 12 units, but we have specified just up to 12 units. And we have noted. Again, those affordability requirements that we think. Should be established or at least considered, considered to achieve the housing goals that we have. In terms of height with a medium intensity residential, we've clarified up to three stories with fourth story allowed. Where it's compatible with existing. Uses and sort of the context as well as where it meets additional affordability goals. So outside of these categories, there were no. I believe there are no changes made on the other land use categories. But we will walk through them in a bit. To reiterate what they were. So I know we're. It might seem like we're going back and forth between the map and the descriptions and we are a bit, but it's because we don't want to get bogged down in just looking at where things are on the map. So I didn't want to start off the conversation with all of that. I've already walked through many of these, this slide has residential area changes, the next slide has mixed use area changes. And I apologize if there was any confusion in some areas, there are a lot of concentrated changes and I know it may have not always been clear where the numbers were pointing. So we're happy to clarify anything with that. I think. It may be best given where we are at the conversation, if we. Hold further description of these changes for clarification and discussion later. I want to make sure we have enough time to, or we. We get started with, with hearing from everyone, but I will note that. Besides the changes I've already discussed, some of those more major changes. There have been some smaller changes throughout, throughout the map. Some were small items that we had just needed to adjust that had been, you know, where maybe, for example, on High Street, there was a mixed use. A couple of parcels that were brought into the mixed use corridor, but they actually are not accessible from High Street, so those were, were brought out of it, you know, example, for example, like that. There were a couple of places in Fifeville and Johnson Village where we added additional medium intensity residential near the school to reflect that goal that we had brought forth. I think in Belmont as well. We did reduce the residential intensity to the east of Belmont Park and that was something that was. Response to what we'd heard and recognizing again how special that place is. And recognizing it's an iconic view for the city, we don't think that the medium intensity residential is necessarily a scale that would impede that, but in order to. Perhaps support the community feedback we heard, we did step that down. Yeah, I'm happy to answer other questions about changes to the map as we get into discussion. In terms of the mixed use areas, I think I've described many of these changes already earlier in the discussion. I'll note, we, for example, in Lewis Mountain, we talked about the residential changes earlier, but we did. Recognize there was a school property that was included in the mixed use corridor. Previously a private school, so we've pulled that to general residential. See other changes, Locust Avenue, there was a mixed use corridor. Sort of a corridor node, if you will, sort of four corner corridor at the intersection of Locust near the park. And we have pulled back on that and created that, shown that as medium intensity residential for a similar reason to why we pulled back in barracks rugby and Greenbrier. That we think the sort of commercial we're trying to achieve there, the mixed use can be achieved through the medium intensity land use. Alright, again, happy to answer more questions about that later. So we feel that this sort of vision still sort addresses these goals that we put forth, this vision and this breaks down a bit, some of the pieces of the chapter vision. That are, that are put out. You know, we're looking to contain a variety of housing options throughout the city, including allowing for greater intensity in areas that currently only allows single family development, that's still a major priority. We're looking at. You know, addressing inequity related to the distribution of land, land uses and increasingly the supply and affordability of housing. Through the city. Ensuring there was an efficient transportation network, the variety of options, which may seem strange to have a land use vision, but to have, you know, improvements, it's, it's, you know, we want to have more people living near those transportation improvements, it goes for transit, but also for other improvements. And we've also included, you know, protecting the national environment, protecting the sense of place of Charlottesville. Within by still achieving these goals of more affordability and intensity, but still. Keeping things Charlottesville. And then also number six, maintaining and improving this commercial vitality and opportunity throughout the city. And again, that's supported in both the residential land uses and the mixed use land uses. So we maintain, you know, committed to this variety of housing types throughout the city. We've, we've, it says missing middle housing here, we're showing this graphic that many of you are probably very familiar with. We're calling it soft density in the affordable housing plan. The missing middle sort of straddles the line between the soft density and the medium intensity and so this is still the. This is not our exact vision, this is not a graphic we made, I want to make sure that's clear for everyone, but it's meant to just. To clarify that we are looking at a wide range of housing options that can achieve various levels of affordability in many different ways, or excuse me, different levels of housing options in many different ways. We've included here, we've got a set of slides with the descriptions of. All the land uses pairing the description with the map, I'm going to go through these fairly quickly because we've discussed them, changes already. But again, as I was just mentioning. In terms of the residential land uses, you know, we remain committed to these sort of principles we put forth previously. Which we've, we've discussed. Again, this is where the general residential land uses play out, as you've seen in the previous maps, this just, just shows the general residential. With the description we've already discussed. This really emphasizes to me the corridors that pop out with the medium intensity residential, again, we're not only talking about those mixed use corridors when we talk about corridors, but we're talking about these. Medium intensity residential corridors, which also are mixed use, but in a different kind of scale. The higher intensity residential areas are shown here. And in many ways, you haven't mentioned any areas that we changed on the map for these, but there were a few spots that were. Adjusted that I'll call out here. We did receive several comments about this parcel up on Park Street, we received many emails about supporting higher intensity of use on that site and so we have increased that from medium intensity to. Higher intensity. And along JPA, I meant to mention this earlier, we did previously show this all as higher intensity residential. And we have pulled back a bit in some of those areas and I. I believe the reasoning for that was due to environmental constraints and other, at least on the south end, the southwest. In terms of. The other, that's towards the northeast portion here, I believe. We stepped back there to sort of reflect the existing conditions in that area. That may be one I need to confirm with Ronald. Again, this is the mixed use areas, we haven't changed this general concept a lot, just again, calling out where they're located in the city. We have, as I noted previously, pulled back on some of the, the mixed use nodes that were previously. In barracks rugby and in Greenbrier. But again, would like to reiterate this large opportunity on 29 Emmett Street that is in that area to provide both that sort of higher intensity housing and that commercial use. Again, there's no red on this slide, text wise anyway, the descriptions of these areas were not changed from what we previously discussed. Though we did swap out the neighborhood mixed use node picture to better reflect sort of what we maybe were envisioning at that scale. This is the. Just the mixed use corridors shown here with the business and technology areas. Again, there were not major changes to these, to these areas, the one. The two changes to the neighborhood mixed use corridor area were again, a locust have and along rugby have. And again, with those areas, we envisioned that the medium intensity could still, you know, that could still allow for sort of a. Focused area of medium intensity residential with, with commercial. The one clarification we did make in this category was just to note what we meant by key intersection for the urban mixed use corridor. In terms of height and so we've identified that that means some of these major roads notified in the streets that work plan, so. Just wanted to clarify that. Last time we met, I think we talked about. Development considerations, you know, how, how this would actually play out on the ground. And so again, these, these have been slightly adjusted in some ways, we've added. A note about the design control districts. Which as of now is something that will remain in place. which as of now is something that will remain in place. We've also added under environmental issues, you know, we know there are a lot of different things to be considered. Critical slopes obviously is, is always a topic of discussion. We've got the stream corridor protection area on the map because it's an important thing to consider. We also know that stormwater runoff, you know, consideration for the flood flood plain, those are important. And then topography, that's something we heard a lot about in the last round of feedback. The other thing I would note, as we think about what might be considered in the, sort of the zoning piece of this, or as we move into implementation. These last two bullets, I think are really important based on the feedback we received in May and June. Tree canopy is one major priority that we heard from a lot of folks. And I think that goes for everyone throughout the city, you know, not necessarily pulling back completely on, you know, development opportunities due to tree canopy, but supporting it as much as possible. You know, retention, replacement and additions to that tree canopy. So, you know, we look, we're, we're working to make that more clear in the, the plan because it is a priority in there. And then transportation, which we already discussed, transportation improvements need to be a major priority related to land use, but also in general in the document. We also call out the small area plans. These are the current small area plans, sort of the most recent plans. There are details in these plans that should be considered for any, any development that happens within these areas, you know, the land use map does not show every single detail of these, these plans, but they remain a part of the comprehensive plan document and need to be considered. And we've also proposed potential locations that we think could be considered for future small area plans. And these are listed in alphabetical order, but they include areas that we know have been, many of these areas have been talked about for potential smaller plans previously. You know, not only Will and Mills, but I know, you know, Rose Hill, Harris Street, Preston Avenue area has been called out previously. JPA. You know, I think a lot of these areas have been on the sort of list in the comp plan for a while, but we think especially given potential for land use intensity in these areas, there could be potential candidates. The other thing I would mention is just, we have some examples of how this might actually look in the zoning. You know, which I know you all are intimately familiar with zoning, but we just want to make it clear that this is not the last piece. It's not just the land use map that gets implemented. We'll be moving forward to zoning rewrite. And so these are some examples. These are not examples that have been developed for Charlottesville. These are examples from other places. Just showing how, you know, we can describe ways that this can really work within these neighborhoods. You know, how do we fit four units in? You know, here's some examples. How do we fit more than that in? You know, there'll be examples in a variety of ways in the zoning. And also layout, what else needs to happen to really make these, these units work, you know? So, so I want to make it clear that, you know, this is, we look forward to, to coming out in the end with a zoning ordinance that can fully implement this vision. All right, I'm almost done. Just want to reiterate, we talked about the schedule. And we look forward to, to meeting with you in a couple of weeks, talk about chapters. But this is available on the website as well. And with that, this is the next item on our agenda.
Hey, Mr. Rice, what we'd like to do is open it up. And what we like to do is just get your input. I'm not, not certain that we're going to be able to get into a back and forth between the public and the consultant. Cause there are a lot of people that want to speak and the commissioners want to get into a back and forth with the, with the consultant and council may want to as well. So what I'll ask you to do is just, if you've got some thoughts, give us your thoughts. And you'll have three minutes, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell. And we do have 238 registered attendees joining us tonight. And thank you all for your participation. We have 31 currently with hands raised. And at this time, if you would like to address the planning commission, please click your raise hand icon, or if you're joining us by phone, press star nine. And we will call on first Michelle Rowan, followed by Fred Borch. Michelle, you're on with the planning commission and you have three minutes.
Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we recently purchased in Charlottesville, moved here. And honestly, had we known before we purchased, we would not have purchased here. We had no idea that the ultimate goal of Charlottesville was to have this high density area. We specifically look for something close to the hospital, R1 coming off of acreage. That's what we were looking for. We kind of feel like we were a little bit, it would have been nice if you guys would have taken the opportunity to spread the word. It's kind of feels very much like you guys did this fairly underhanded and it was not a well-known fact. That's a very strong idea in the community. We're in the happy yellow area. What I see as happy yellow is the R1. That's great. But we're almost surrounded by Goldenrod. Once one place in Goldenrod goes on the market, a builder's coming in to build 12 units. That's the way that according to the statistics, according to what you guys lay out, that's what's going to happen. That makes R1 next door not so happy because they were looking for R1, right? Otherwise they wouldn't be there. Then what happens is that eventually the golden rod becomes a circle of noise, roads, people, sound, like people that were there in R1. They don't want to live there anymore, but we're stuck in the happy yellow. But the happy yellow is not so happy anymore. But the people in the Goldenrod area, they got the buyout. They got the money to be able to move. The people that are really getting stuck here are the ones in the happy yellow. Cause that's not being rezoned and there's no builder who's going to be able to come in and buy us out. We get stuck. We get stuck with the noise, the confusion, the traffic, the chaos, the high population that we didn't buy to begin with. And guess what? The happy yellow, it's also the protected people, those sensitive areas, they're in the happy yellow. The, this didn't work in the 60s and it doesn't work now. And I think you guys have missed it in a big way.
Thank you very much.
And next we have Fred Borch, followed by Ellen Tully. Fred, you are on with the planning commission. You have three minutes.
Welcome Fred, and you'll need to unmute your mic.
Okay, how's, how's that? Can you hear me?
Perfect.
All right. Well, good evening, one and all. And let me just say to begin with that this has been a very interesting presentation and I've, I've enjoyed listening to it and I've learned a lot. I've been a homeowner in Charlottesville for 30 years. And I've lived off and on in Charlottesville for 40 years. And so I know something about the city and I love the city. And I guess my, my bottom line upfront is I'm a professional historian and as I've studied history more and more, beware the law of unintended consequences. And, and I think that as I hear about the future land plan, which a lot of thought has gone into, my first question is for you is, what are we trying to solve here? What's our goal? Is it more housing? Because if the goal is more housing, we're definitely going to get more housing with higher density. No question about it. But I, I think the goal really should be more affordable housing. And so then my question to you is, are we, well, what's affordable housing? I don't know. It's sort of like Pontius Pilate saying, what is truth? I'm not sure what affordable housing is, but I guess my, my thought for all of you would be, is it really an issue of affordable housing or is it really an issue of poverty? Is the issue really poverty rather than whether or not housing is affordable? I, as I look at this and I realize there's been lots of comments and lots of changes to the future land plan, which, which I applaud, and it shows me that everyone is listening. I'm not sure that the solution for the future of the town is to really increase density so markedly. I'm totally in favor of more housing if it's affordable. I realize that it's a difficult situation. But I'm very concerned about the law of unintended consequences. The beauty of a neighborhood of Belmont, for example, is the beautiful old single family homes. I don't live in Belmont, but it's a great place to be. And I know people who do live in, in, in there. The same with Greenbrier. And once you start tinkering with our existing zoning, I think that we just have to be very, very careful. So I would encourage you in my remaining 15 seconds to go back, please, and do additional study. Are we really going to reach affordability here by doing all these changes to zoning? Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much.
And next up, we have Ellen Tully, followed by John Thompson.
Ellen, welcome. And you'll need to unmute your mic. And Ellen just took her hand now.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Oh, there she is. She's back.
I'm new to Charlottesville, but I'm not new to the issues of, of developers unintended consequences. And my experience over my, well, I guess it's 50 years that I've been living in urban areas is that developers only interest is in the bottom line. And if you're going to have you're going to have zoning that opens the door to extreme growth on, in residential neighborhoods, the developers are going to take advantage of it. And it's going to be very important that you make it clear what is limited and what is, what is possible. As, as you set up your, your plan and your zoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next we have John Thompson, followed by Kaki Pearson. John, you're on with the commission.
Welcome, John.
Thanks. Can you hear me? Great. Okay. I just, I'm going to try to make this brief. I just want to say what you're doing here is it's worthy, you know, it's a worthy goal. You're trying to change the zoning to make for more affordable housing and I appreciate that. But I just wanted to get down, drill down to something specific. So in some cases, it looks like this map is carving up existing neighborhoods into something that looks sort of like a gerrymandered map. I mean, I don't know, it, on an earlier map, I think what you had was Grove Road designated as general residential, like the rest of the neighborhood. And now it's up to medium intensity. And basically what that does is it cuts us off from the rest of the neighborhood. And for years, really decades, we've just had to bear the brunt of traffic noise and congestion in our neighborhood. And so I know I'm speaking for a lot of neighbors when I ask you to please, please re-designate Grove General Residential. And I'll just want to say one thing quickly to the people who want to be able to walk to a coffee shop, you already can. If you don't mind a good walk, okay? And please don't ask for this if you don't want to be able to, if you don't want to walk next door to a coffee shop, okay? If you're not willing to do that. So it really, um, the larger issue here was what I, the way I see it is whether individual neighborhoods really have a say in their futures. And obviously we all know that all levels of governance, the common good has to take precedence. So all we're asking here in our neighborhood, at least Long Grove, is that neighborhoods have some say. Okay. No matter how much or how little taxes you pay. Okay. We're just asking that we have some say. And so I'd ask you, please, let's think about smart change and not just change. And I know you all are trying to do a lot in pleasing a lot of different groups and I thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Kaki Pearson, followed by Ted Pearson. Kaki, you're on with planning commission.
Kaki, you're welcome.
You need to unmute your mic.
Unmute. Okay. All right. Thanks very much. I'm having a hard time with the pointing the finger. It seems like it's just the city that has this issue. Now granted, over the last, oh, I don't know, 10 years or so, we've seen huge numbers of apartments. And townhouses, condominiums, every east on East Rio, East Water Street, Fifth Street, West Main, Ridge, Cherry, Preston Road. But have, how much have they really helped the affordable housing? Census data show, has showed that the constructions of new homes in the city has outpaced the city's population growth. I agree, we need affordable housing. So why didn't council, frankly, in the planning commission act to ensure that there's meeting, meaningful percentages of affordability to these, all these units that have been reserved for people who can afford them. And then they, they increase the rents, they keep increasing the rents and before long, nobody can get in except students. But I just, like in the dairy market project, for instance, that's really recent. Only 15% of the 180 units are classified as affordable. That's 8%. I think that's kind of pathetic. Council has blamed Charlottesville, single family homeowners. And it's, is it really us? I mean, they've allowed the planning to go on. We're not the government. The, the residents are not government. Government should have been looking at this for decades. As you can see, I'm very frustrated. And why isn't the county involved? You know, there's the circle around the city. But there are bus services into the county. And it seems to me that places like the, besides the county, but Old Kmart, above stores on Preston Avenue, Apple Mall Square, Fashion Square. There's, there's so much that could be done there. And, and Duberry Living on the Down Palm Wall, what an eyesore that is.
You've got about five seconds left.
Okay. I want to thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Wonderful points. Appreciate it.
Next we have Ted Pearson, followed by Martha Bass.
Ted, welcome. Ted, you need to unmute.
I just did.
You're good. You don't look like Ted in the photo here though.
I'm a Ted.
You probably look like me.
That's my wife.
That's okay.
No, I just want to just start by just reemphasizing disrupting of the existing neighborhoods. Even on small lots, you can build larger dwellings that you know, take up space, lose trees, greenery. And you have issues of parking, traffic, you know, existing infrastructure. How's that going to affect, affect it? I'm a member of Mason Oxford Hills new neighborhood. I'm a member of Mason Oxford Hills New Neighborhood, and our street is very narrow, widely used for walking, biking, running. And it's also a corridor between Rugby Avenue and Rugby Road. And on Rugby Road, if you start building those larger complexes in areas of the, the single-family dwellings, a lot of people have bought those and renovated them over the years, many lately, in the last year or so. So you're going to be disrupting that entire neighborhood that adjoins my neighborhood. We don't want it to look like Fourteenth Street. And also, developers recently, you know, why haven't they built affordable units only instead of higher-priced apartments and dwellings? In some cases, I've read that they've paid cash to the city of Charlottesville because they did not build or add on affordable units to their projects. So where's that go? And also, with minimal controls, zoning developers can do pretty much what they can do to, to make their money. So why can't the existing controls, your regulatory controls do something to make things faster with these developments or hold them to what's make affordable units? It just takes too long now for them, and the time is money for these guys. And also make use of the, the existing vacant real estate and commercial areas. Because they're underused, they could be used. And also, where's UVA in this process? I'm sure they have plans for affordable units. Get them involved as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ted. Thank you.
And next up, we have Martha Bass, followed by M. Simpson. Martha, you're on.
Welcome, Martha. You need to unmute your mic. You'll need to unmute your mic.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I'd like to echo what all the speakers so far have said. In that I worry that whatever we're doing, we have not been able to allow affordable housing in any of the new development that we've done. The developers seem to be able to pay a fee to get out of doing affordable housing. We only allow affordable housing for a certain number of years, so I'm very skeptical about that whole thing. But I wanted to address a specific issue tonight, and that is the allowable height in medium-density residential. Now, I saw on the new plans that they've reduced that allowable height to four stories instead of four and a half stories. But the other day, I had the opportunity to getting a tire, a flat tire fixed, it's Settle Tire. I walked down West Street to the end of West Street alongside of Tenth Street and saw what a four-and-a-half-story building looks like next to a residential single-family home, and it's pathetic. And if we have allowed that in the past, I mean, I don't know how zoning or planning commission allowed that to begin with, but there's these little dwarf, little single-family homes, by the way, in an historical back, black district, which we're trying to protect at this point. So I really think now that I see that really this allowable height is going to be decided by new zoning rules, I, I think I understand that's what you said tonight. I challenge everybody on Planning Commission and everybody listening tonight to get out of their cars and walk down West Street and stand at the bottom of a four-and-a-half-story building that is right next to a single-family home and see that that is incompatible with anything that Charlottesville wants to do. So that's my comment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have Mark Simpson, followed by Martha Smythe. Mark, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, Mark.
You'll need to unmute your mic. Hey.
Hi, hi. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Great. Okay. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. This is my first time speaking out. I've heard a lot on these calls about redressing racial historical wrongs with this new upzoning plan. I'd like to share with you some of my own history. In the nineteen fifty's, my great-grandparents purchased a brownstone in the city of Chicago. The brownstone housed my great-grandparents, my grandmother, and her two sisters in their respective families. When it was time to collect the deed, my great-grandmother sent my great-grandfather to the bank. During that time, it was a man's world. Women were discouraged from attempting to transact business. For a black woman, it would have been impossible. My great-grandfather, being illiterate, was deceived into signing over the deed back to the bank. My family was forced to move, the families dispersed to different locations and were never able to return to living under the same roof. As a descendant of racial housing injustice, what is my recourse in two thousand twenty-one? Do I go to the city of Chicago and demand that they upzone that neighborhood with the hope of making it more affordable for black people? Or do I go to the owner of the brownstone and demand that they hand over the property to me because it was stolen from my family? Those options sound, and they are absurd. The current owner of that building has nothing to do with what happened to my family. And why would it be okay for me to demand that the city of Chicago dismantle that neighborhood to accommodate apartment buildings and commercial businesses of which would not guarantee affordability for black people? If the city of Charlottesville is serious about redressing housing racial injustices, they could create a program to target individuals and families, much like the voucher program created in Evanston, Illinois, where aggrieved African-Americans only need to show that they were descendants of residents during a certain time period. These individuals are awarded cash. This approach is narrowly tailored and offers a remedy for those who were or could have been impacted. The city of Charlottesville could easily adopt a similar program. Instead, our government is proposing to dismantle single-family neighborhoods like mine. Yes, I will be punished twice. Let me be clear, I don't want twelve-unit buildings or commercial establishments in my neighborhood. I don't want the traffic, the trash, the noise, the crime, and all of that which naturally accompanies denser neighborhoods. No homeowner would sign up for this, not a black one, not a white one, not a purple or green one. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you will rethink this whole thing of destroying neighborhoods. Thank you.
And thank you for staying on time. You, you nailed it. Mr. Rice?
Next, we have Martha Smith or Smythe, and after that is Kemp Hill. Martha, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, Martha.
Hi, I did not sign up to speak, so I don't know quite how that happened, but I'm learning a lot. I like the changes that you all have made. I think some of the comments tonight are right on the money, and I hope that they get incorporated in the next iteration of the plan and the map. So that's all I have for now, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have Kemp Hill, followed by Julia Williams.
Kim, yeah, yeah, we hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I really would just like to make a huge plea to slow down the process and expand it. We are still living in a pandemic which has altered everything, and we're talking about a rezoning which projects to alter everything in the city. And I see no reason to rush it. It's, I think it's a worthy objective to increase affordable housing in the city. I'm a thirty-year resident here. But I just, I see no reason for the rush. We're talking about a wholesale change of the city. And I, and coupled with the pandemic, it just seems foolish to not expand it, to include, as others spoke about both UVA and Albemarle at the table. And, and also to use creative solutions. Increasing density is one option, but there are a whole other host of options, like the earlier spoke, individuals spoke about subsidies and direct grants. So I think Charlottesville is a talented community, and I think there are a whole host of solutions that we haven't even tapped into. So increased density, that's an idea. Let's bring more people and more ideas and more time to the table. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And next, we have Julia Williams, followed by Philip Harway. Julia, you're on with the planning commission.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I live in Belmont and was interested in the comment made by Jennifer about how creating these medium-density corridors helps with connectivity, and I think you suggested that included pedestrian and non, and multimodal safety, and I, I question that because it sounds like more density means more parking and more, a lot of things. So I was curious about how you can explain that, how the, the corridors, maybe it simplifies routes and you have a designated lane, but anyway, that's one item. The other item I had is the areas. Elliott, increased density, that's a very fast road. It's single-family pretty much all the way along it. Going to medium density would probably make it, instead of Elliott, it'll be more like Cherry, I guess. It becomes, you know, we have hotels on Cherry, we have high-rises, so what you are doing is creating a swath through Belmont that instead of slowing traffic is going to speed it up. I think, if we go to this median density. So I'm very curious about how you envision that being part of the pedestrian safe and multimodal safe and controlling speeds with the density allowed along Really Street. I do know some of those lots are quite big, so I see that. But exiting onto Elliott is not a safe thing as it is. Crossing Elliott is tricky. So that's a zoning, we'll have to take very careful look at what it means, how you enter that road, because it is a major corridor. The decision to go to four units from three, I thought the initial argument for three was that it maybe discouraged teardown because the lot, it was analyzed by lot size, and three would maintain validity of existing homes. And so I'm curious about the four unit. Maybe it does need to be tied to lot size, even though I believe this ordinance was trying to pull away from lot size, units per lot. I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure about that, but I think you ended up pulling out units per, what is it, units per acreage maybe, and now it's units per lot. But I am worried about a lot of these lots being now pressured for redevelopment that might not have been if we just had three units allowed. So that's a concern. I would actually extend a compliment that I feel like this has been well-communicated to the community. If you paid attention to the city website and paid attention to your neighborhood associations, this topic of the rezoning has not been hidden from us. And I'm sorry, a new owner didn't understand this and didn't force the realtor to tell them what all was happening, but this has been in conversation for a long time. So I'm frustrated by that comment because, boy, I've attended an awful lot of meetings over many, many months. I think that's it. I'm sure the neighborhood has other concerns. I, I appreciate the change around Belmont Park.
You've got a couple of seconds, Julia, but.
Okay. About the.
Let me just say thank you for acknowledging the communications, NDS and the commission and the consultants. Appreciate your acknowledgement. I'm sorry, I think we lost you, or I may have had a cutoff. Forgive me if I did, Julia. Mr. Rice, who's next?
Next up, we have Philip Harway. After that, we have Leonard Shapa. Philip, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, Philip.
Thank you. As the overwhelming purpose of re-doing our comprehensive plan seems to be to achieve more affordable housing for the citizens amongst us who are having difficulty, and also to take this opportunity to try and right some of the injustices of the past. I would like to focus on one element of this strategy. Since finding out about this new comprehensive plan only in March of this year, and at that point, getting myself educated and involved in this discussion, it very much feels to me as if I'm watching a football game where the home team decides that it's time to throw the Hail Mary pass because we're losing the game and time is running out. Instead, we should realize that we have time to concentrate on formulating a concrete strategy to succeed with the more affordable housing goals and bring along the majority of the citizens of this city to that commendable goal. This plan being presented by the consulting team is what I believe to be an ideological blueprint for pro-density interests. We're asked to sit by and watch our representatives put all of our eggs in one basket and hope that upzoning will lead to affordable housing. The proposed plan is built on the premise that building more density will create more affordability. What is lacking here is anything concrete that will dramatically produce affordable housing, other than just hoping that it does. To me, there are more direct actions that should be recommended and acted on right now that if done correctly would be more productive, and if not, should be reexamined again in five years, rather than throw open the whole city to dramatically altered cityscape of more density. The concept of the small-area plans targeting vacant lots and underutilized properties for fast-tracking are a step in the right direction, as is the proposed allowable fourth abode if affordable in R1 zoning. The rest, from what I see, is just that Hail Mary, that the proposals will work. Well, what if it doesn't? And, and, and there are plenty of studies that show they might not. Are you so willing to go big without assurances and guarantees, not accomplish any concrete results besides increasing density with many of the problems this will likely create? It's my understanding that as recently as 2010, the city actually appeared to make affordability less of a goal rather than encouraging more development. It used to be that making a developer offer affordable for a period longer than ten years was in our laws, and that was changed. I'm not as cynical as some of the comments I've read recently suggesting that the city just wants to build more so they can tax more and that they're not concerned with affordability. But return to that longer period of affordability in this next phase, a period of thirty years, as is the case in many other areas of the country, would show our commitment to make a real difference. Add some teeth to the enforcement of zoning, prophets given and promises made, because there's much skepticism in the community as to whether when promises are made, they're kept and enforced. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Leonard Shapa, followed by Maria Monte Gudo. Leonard, you're on with the.
Welcome. Welcome, Leonard.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and all the work that you're doing. I'm going, I want to reinforce a lot of what you're hearing from, from people around the city today, asking you to slow down and, and recognize that what you are proposing in terms of soft density in the general residential areas with three or four lots is already accomplishing a lot. These, these have been considered quite radical changes when they were adopted in Minneapolis and Portland. And we haven't even had a chance to see how they're starting to change there. I was very interested in the frequently asked question, which asked, what can we learn from these other cities' examples? And what I read there was some concern that the, it wasn't happening fast enough, that people weren't building those apartments above the garages or converting their basements into affordable apartments fast enough to bring down prices. And so I get the sense that the reason why you want to go to twelve units in the median-intensity residential is because you, you think that if you offer that level of density, there will be a lot of developers interested in purchasing single-family home lots and building twelve-unit apartments. So you could get something that happens much, much more quickly, depending on the details of how this is zoned. And that's where I want to focus my remaining comments. I'm, I see that you want the buildings in medium-intensity to be housed, house-sized. I'm hoping tonight in the discussion, I'll hear more about what that means. When I looked at Slide forty, where you had a sample zoning details, one of the slides, one, one of the categories there was mentioned as medium, and so I thought, well, maybe this is what they have in mind. And so I thought, well, maybe this is what they have in mind for medium intensity residential. What it says, if you do the calculations, is that if you have a quarter acre lot, you, that's considered large, you can have 12 units. And taking up 60% of the lot, you can build up to three or four stories. You could have a building 20,000 to 26,000 square feet. Okay, so I want to, we heard earlier about the dairy market example. I think some people might have assumed that that would be impossible to build in a residential area, physically impossible to build. But what we learn in this zoning code, the sample zoning code, is that the, the way this is implemented could allow buildings of 26,000 square feet, four stories tall in the middle of a residential neighborhood that currently has 1,500 square foot houses. Most of them are one-story ranches, some of them are one and a half story Cape Cod's. We are going to be even more dwarfed if we build such buildings in the neighborhood where I live. Then the houses right next to dairy market. So I know that a lot of people have gemooned that outcome. And I'm sure hoping that you will offer us some reassurance that house-sized means house-sized. In our neighborhood, the houses, as I mentioned, are quite small. So if you, house-sized around here is 30,000 square feet. If that's what you have in mind, apartments in a 30, 3,000 square foot building, I think that's something that the neighborhood would be quite comfortable with. And I'm hoping you'll tell us more about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Maria Monte Gudo, followed by Benjamin Heller. Maria, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, Maria.
Hello. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to to talk. I live in a neighborhood, a Greenbrier neighborhood for about 20 years and I have been in Charlottesville for 30 years coming from abroad. I'm one of the foreigners in this city. I really oppose to the high-density plans. And I cannot be more than agree with most of the people that have been talking before me. I have two more points to mention. I recently discovered that many of my neighbors had never heard or had vague idea about the future of the land plan. Everyone should know about what's going on. And so I think more need to be done in this matter. And the third point is, I have like a question that asks to everybody. Why there is such a rush to this drastic action that will significantly affect the city? And no one can assure us that the lack or affordable housing will be sold by increasing density. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Joe, check out three more people and then I'm going to chat with my colleagues about how we should proceed next.
Okay, Chair. Those next three people are Benjamin Heller, Crystal Passmore and Maureen Burkhill. And first, we have Benjamin Heller. You're on with planning commission.
Hi, thanks for taking the time to to listen to our concerns. You know, I read the Affordable Housing Plan when it came out and the PSH analysis that underlay it. And I was pretty shocked, to say the least, that you can search the word student in that document and it comes up a handful of times. I think one of them's a footnote. And that's just analytical malpractice. We're a city of 47,000 people, around a university of 16,000 undergrads, 8,000 graduate students. Only a small fraction live on grounds. Most of the rest live in the city or just over the county line. All of the numbers that have anything to do with poverty or rent burden are massively distorted by students. The census did a study of the effect of off-campus students on poverty statistics in 211 counties, large numbers of students. Moving students, Charlottesville's poverty rate dropped from over 25% to just under 15%. That was the 11th biggest drop out of the 211 counties in the study. Over 9% of our households are 18 to 24-year-old households. The number for Virginia is 4%. Who do you think these people are? Students' recorded money income has no connection with their spending power. Among households in town with an income of less than $10,000 a year, a higher percentage live in rentals costing more than $1,250 a month than of households making $35,000 to $50,000 a year. Who are those people? Who do you think they are? And they almost all show up as severely rent-burdened. Only 250 18 to 24-year-old households are zero income and thus excluded from rent-burdened statistics by the census. So it's clearly a tiny fraction of off-campus student households. We have somewhere north, 1,000 burdened households that are a pure statistical artifact. And even if they were truly burdened, this is UVA's responsibility to solve. It's not fair for the city and its residents to have to bear the entire financial and physical cost of customers of a rich institution, rich in money and rich in land. I see all the gray on that map that serves the entire state. The only question I have is, you know, is this a result of laziness? I don't think it is. You've all worked hard. Is it a result of incompetence? I don't think so. We have award-winning consultants. Or is this dishonesty? And that's what I think it is. Planned proponents trying to create a false crisis narrative with exaggerated statistics without proper consideration of students. You haven't given us a plan for Charlottesville. You've given us a plan for a city that doesn't exist. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And next up, we have Crystal Passmore, followed by Maureen Burkhill. Crystal, you're on with the planning commission. You have three minutes.
Welcome, Crystal.
Hi. I live on Forest Ridge Road. Thank you for taking my comment tonight. My husband and I are trading off watching our very active three-year-old so that we would both have the opportunity to talk to you guys tonight. I also know a lot of parents who are not able to talk to you. This is a major timeframe for personal childcare for people who have young children. I just want to point out there are voices you're not hearing tonight. I also want to point out that you had a long period of feedback as well as a lot of feedback. Your feedback summary is 33 pages long. And I was looking through it and I know that one of the top comments you received was to make historically exclusionary areas more dense to protect minority communities and to generally increase density across the city. That was, that was, those were the top three comments you guys received by email and by voicemail, which is where you received the most comments, over 1,000 comments. So I feel like these are the closest thing we have to representative of how the city actually feels. It does not seem like you took any of these notes. The current draft, you specifically allowed less density in the historically exclusionary areas where most people ask for more. You decreased the maximum building height when people asked for an increase in density citywide. Over and over again tonight, I heard you say the things that we want out of these areas, that the things we want are still possible. You kept saying still possible without saying the rest of the sentence, which is that they're still possible, even though this draft makes it harder. Um, what the city, what this, what what the city wants is currently possible with, with, with the draft you gave us tonight, but it's less possible with the changes between the last draft and this one. You're giving us the opposite of what we asked for as a community. I don't know how you got to the current map with the comments you received before. I've also seen that homeowners sorry. I've also seen that homeowners bought their home, they didn't buy the city. If a homeowner, homeowner does not want to turn the house into duplex, they do not have to do that more than half the city rents. And the people who rent want more housing, they want more affordable housing. They want housing in areas actually close to jobs and stores. The people who are talking here tonight are often not the ones with young families. They're not the people working two jobs. They're not the people who need affordable housing. The people talking tonight already have housing. They don't, they don't have the problem that SAGE is trying to address. And I, I can tell it's hard for them to even imagine a person having those problems. Thank you so much. I hope the next map will reflect the actual community we live in, Charlottesville as a whole, not just the demographic of people who have unlimited time to come here and speak at these meetings. Thank you so much.
And thank you very much.
And next we have Maureen Burkhill. Maureen, you're on with the planning commission. You have three minutes.
Maureen, welcome. You'll need to unmute your mic. Maureen, would you like to speak? Your mic is muted and your hand is down. All right, we'll do one more then. Let's go to, I mean, Mr. Rice, go to the next person if you like.
And that would be Andrew Grimshaw. Andrew, you're on with the planning commission.
Hi, we're going to close off. So I have a somewhat different opinion than the person before me. I'll try to be brief. First off, I want to confess that I do not share your goal of increasing density in the city. And I don't recall that ever being on any ballot presented to the citizens. I've voted in every election since I was 18, except once when I was overseas. Second, you basically have thrown Alderman under the bus. When, if you look at Alderman, there's 22 houses in that stretch that's going to go to high density. If they all go to 12, that's 264 houses on Alderman, which I think it will do. And those will pretty much be all filled by students. If you don't think they're going to be filled by students, you're not paying attention. All of the multi-unit in the, in the areas already filled by students and it will just be filled more by students. And then finally, and I'm going to try to be very brief here because I, I really disagree with not just the whole process, but some of the fundamental perspectives that you have, particularly the aspect of punishing neighborhoods because of the behavior of people who lived there in the past. And by the way, I come from the upper Midwest where we didn't have many of the things that are complained about in that thing. So I've seen this before. I grew up in Bloomington, Indiana, another college town approximately the same size as Charlottesville. It's a bigger university there, but it's the same basic thing. There is a street called Atwater and the street behind it that I can't remember the name that was converted to allow higher density housing. Within 15 years, a 30-block area had degenerated into a giant student ghetto. Houses that weren't well-maintained, trash on the streets, all of that stuff. I mean, even now, if you look at Lewis Mount, many of the houses where the students live are basically trashed. So what you're proposing to do is throw Alderman under the bus, make it more difficult for the neighborhood, which is a walking neighborhood, just so we can have a bunch of students trash the neighborhood. And that, you know, that's the way I feel about that. And I'm sure there are many people who disagree with that basic premise. But I don't think this is the way cities are supposed to operate where cities selectively decide to destroy neighborhoods to meet some particular political goal that they have. Thank you very much.
Right, and thank you very much. Mr. Rice, would you like me to chat with the board or do you have anybody else that we want to get in right now?
Well, I am seeing 59 hands raised.
Okay, so let me, let me chat with my colleagues and see what, how they like to do this. I do want to give us a chance to interact with the consultant while we're still moderately fresh. So my recommendation is we take a few more, maybe six or seven more, take a break, and then we engage with the, the consultants. And after we've engaged and given council a chance to engage, then allow the public back in. Any, any other recommendations beyond that?
I, I think one thing I've seen council do when there are many people who'd like to speak is to change the time limit from three minutes to two minutes. I think in most cases you can get everything across in that time. And that way we're looking at two hours of public comment in addition to what we heard rather than three.
Okay, I, I think that's reasonable. Any objection to the order that I suggested that we take a few more people than we, you guys engage, council engages? And then we open it back up. Ms. Robertson?
I do have some hesitation about changing the amount allowed to people while you are in the midst of the public comments. As a general rule, it is more advisable if, if you know you're going to have a lot of comments to go ahead and vote to change that time before you begin taking the comments. Though unfortunately, I would not recommend changing the amount of time while you're in the midst of the comment process.
Is there any objection to me opening the floor back up to the public for five or six more comments? And then us engaging the consultant and council engaging the consultants? And then open it back, opening it back up to the, to the public? Ms. Robertson says no. My colleagues, are you guys either? What do you guys want to? Roy, is that a, I couldn't tell. Is that it? Ms. Russell? Ms. Ms. Debbie, Ms. Bob? Okay, all right, so let's take five more comments and then we'll take a bio break. And then we will engage the consultants. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Chair. The next five speakers will be Brendan Novak, Caroline Kloskow, Dan Miller, Anthony Artuso and Don Moran. And right now we have Brendan Novak and you're on with planning commission. You have three minutes.
Hi there. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Amazing. Okay, so real quick, just to tell you a little bit about myself, I just moved back to Charlottesville after being away for a little bit. And frankly, searching for housing in the city was kind of a nightmare. You know, I'm a, a young professional. I was looking basically for like mid-range apartment in the city where I can walk and or bike to everywhere that I need to go. And looking through that, it was pretty clear to me that if those did exist, they were rare. And it just, it, it was not a an easy process. I ended up getting very lucky. I was able to find a, a unit in basically converted large house in the Belmont area that has been turned into four apartment units. And so I find myself very fortunate for that to have happened. But I don't understand why that can't be something that's available to more people and something that's available more easily. So I don't feel like I kind of lucked into a perfect situation where it's something that if people choose to live that way, they, they can do that. And so listening to the comments here and kind of understanding the plan, I'm, I'm a little bit puzzled at all the outrage behind what's being proposed, given that the, the unit that I live in currently is pretty emblematic of a lot of the proposed changes in this plan. So far as I understand, it's converted house. It looks just like all the other houses on the block. The only difference is that I can afford to live there, whereas I could not afford to live in an entire single-family home, for example. But looking at it from the front, you would not be able to tell that it was different than my next-door neighbors, my left or right. And then in terms of the traffic impact, something that was really important for me, again, like I said, was the ability to walk and bike to the places that I need to go. And that's just not an attainable thing if we don't have things close together. So, you know, in, in order to achieve that, I, I think you can't, you can't both not want traffic and also not want density. It's, it's kind of an either-or thing, in my opinion. So it's just a little frustrating to hear all of the, all the outrage because I think like ultimately you have to, you have to choose. So, you know, to conclude, I don't want to ramble. I, I know we're limited on time, but I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. And I really hope that more people are going to have the opportunity to live in situations like the one that I've been so fortunate to find.
And very good, thank you.
Next, we have Caroline Kloskow. Caroline, you're on with the planning commission.
Hi, thank you. My name's Carrie. I'm here for Click. That's the Charlottesville Loan Fund Housing Coalition. Just a few comments about the map. First of all, I want to draw people's attention back to the HACX proposal. This is the map that introduced an affordable housing overlay throughout the city. And it allowed medium density, intensity by right development for all projects that include affordable units. Now, we think that the HACX proposal is preferable to the current version of the future land use map for two main reasons. One is it answers an objection that we've heard many times from commentators just tonight. And that it ensures additional density will be dedicated to affordability, that it won't be used to build luxury and student apartments. Two, it actually writes a clear plan for protecting historically black neighborhoods into the map. Now, we appreciate this identification we've heard about tonight of the sensitive communities. We're on the same We're on the same page with the commission and SEAL plans about which communities need protecting. But we think that the map needs to unambiguously prevent developers from taking advantage of the low cost of lands in certain neighborhoods, which are historically black and low income. Something that we noticed when we were looking at the side-by-side slide of the August map and the May map is that there's in general a lot less gray in the historically exclusionary neighborhoods, the white neighborhoods, North Downtown, Lewis Mountain Road, Locust Grove, Barracks Rugby. There's less allowance for median density under the current version of the map than there was in the May version. We think this is a step backwards. We're disappointed by this. Finally, and probably most importantly, we would ask the commission to tell us what they mean when they say affordable, to write this into the comprehensive plan. We want a definition of affordability that lifts up our most vulnerable community members. And specifically what we would ask, we would ask for it to be set at thirty percent of the area median income. And that is about twenty-eight thousand dollars a year for a family of four. So we'd like that definition. And overall, thank you all for all your hard work. We see this as a pioneering effort to undo the effects of a hundred years' worth of housing discrimination. We think it is very important. We are on board with what you're trying to do, but those are suggestions.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Dan Miller. Dan, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, Dan.
Everybody, I'll try to be quick. I just wanted to say, in general, I'm supportive of density in general, and for that matter, I'm supportive of targeted reparations to to right past wrongs. And I think that's probably a more directly we can make some of the changes that we, we want to see as a, you know, community. I'm concerned about a couple of things with the plan. First and foremost, that you seem to have targeted here folks who happen to live on arterial roads. I, for example, live on an arterial in Belmont. I just bought a house here recently, and I would agree with the previous speaker that the HACX plan seems to be better and that it doesn't sort of gerrymander off different parts of the community or, or in some ways sort of make that, I don't know if I want to say discrimination. I don't think that's, that's sort of a strong word for it, but I do think it seems to me to divide up neighborhoods. And sort of related to that, a point I haven't heard anyone make is, you know, really developers here are an enemy that we all share, right? And I'll use an anecdote from living in Seattle for ten years. I never once met a human being living in Seattle who got a deal on their rent in a commercial property. I knew many, many, many people who had good, you know, what I'd say, oh, good, they have a great rent that they're paying, and it was always to a single-family homeowner. And that's just how it inevitably works. You know, those, those are where the deals are going to be. So I think when I saw originally that my house was in a general, you know, zone, I was excited because I thought, okay, I could do an ADU, or I could, you know, even do townhouses, or, you know, there's all kinds of things. It was very, seemed like there was a lot there to be done to create affordable housing. And I certainly looked into that. Moving that from medium, where you're, to medium rather, where you're talking about perhaps a twelve unit building, that is a lot different than, than I think what's in a lot of these neighborhoods. So I would encourage us to think more about how, you know, if we want to get to that affordable housing, doing that, you know, the way to win-win on that is to do it through to the homeowners that are there. And I think there's lots of folks here who want to do ADUs or, or, you know, do duplexes, things like that, that could make that happen. Thank you.
Thanks.
And next, we have Anthony Artuso. Anthony, you're on with the planning commission.
Anthony, welcome.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Well, I want to offer my thanks to the planning team and, and others in their efforts to try to incorporate input from the community. They clearly, you know, attempted to try to better accommodate the various and, and potentially conflicting goals of the land use plan. So I do appreciate that. However, I still think there's much, much work to be done. If you look at the document and the the categories of the land use plan repeatedly throughout the document, it refers to future planning efforts, additional zoning activities, local area planning, affordable housing planning efforts, future efforts that will make this land use plan workable and achievable, you know, achieve some of the critical goals. I, there, I see no reason why the planning commission should adopt this land use plan as a final plan until those future efforts are completed. The planning team should come out to the neighborhoods. Yes, there has been these types of input session, but no one has come out to my neighborhood to meet with the neighborhood association and review block by block the proposals for those elements, explain to the neighborhood what they mean by a housing four-story unit that meets, is in, you know, characteristic of the neighborhood and, and fits in with the other residential units in the neighborhood. What does that mean in practice, practically, specifically in the zoning code? That might alleviate some of the concerns we've heard here. So I really urge the planning commission, take the time to do that additional planning. There's no reason to adopt this land use plan as the final plan. You can take it under advisement. You can use it as a guide for that future efforts. You can also be using the housing advisory committee's document along with that, but really need to come out and meet with the neighborhoods, go block by block, need to complete your housing affordability plan with funding behind it, not just hopes and dreams. Need to complete the infrastructure planning that underpins this proposal. You need to complete the interaction with UVA and with the county and report that back before final land use plan should be adopted. I think there's, you know, many good ideas in this, but there's also many that are missing. If we're talking about affordable housing, we need to have much more community ownership. This is all predicated on private development. And maybe, as the last speaker indicated, homeowners that, oh, they're going to do the right thing and, and build an additional dwelling unit and offer it, you know, but we need more, you know, community development corporations, more urban land trusts. There's just much more creativity that is needed and much more planning before a final adoption is, is appropriate.
Thank you very much, Anthony.
And next, we have Dan Moran. Dan, I'm sorry, Don Moran. Don, you're on with the planning commission. You have three minutes.
And welcome, Don.
I unmuted. Thank you all very much for taking all the time to do this hard work and for giving us the time to speak with you and to talk with you with your comments. I agree with all the statements made in opposition to the plan, which are really asking you to take more time to get more information. When I, when it was first brought to my attention in March of this year that there was this plan, did a little research, and I found that the consultants RHI have performed work for Sandy Springs in Georgia, population of a hundred thousand, with projected growth of forty percent in the coming years. Our projected growth in Charlottesville is only one percent over the next twenty years. That's very important. I'll get back to it. But the plan RHI created, and it was an excellent plan. I really learned a lot about Sandy Springs. It contained traffic flow studies, detailed demographic information, detailed assessment of housing needs, census data showing projected population growth, critical environmental and economic data, topography and water studies, studies looking at where and how growth would occur, visualization, visualizations, what that growth would look like. And at the end, there was a list giving the actual price and source of funding for every recommendation. All of this is absent from the plan, but you've heard from many of the people tonight that they'd like to get that information. And then finally, every neighborhood in Sandy Springs contributed to and signed off on the plan. And the plan's number one goal was the preservation of this existing neighborhood. We've heard that comment over and over again tonight. People want you to come out to the neighborhoods and explain to them what this plan is, and then to listen to their feedback so they can provide you with information to help you in this planning process, which is overwhelming. So the RH plan for Charlottesville, as far as I can see, doesn't take into account the true population growth projected by the Weldon Center at UVA, the gold standard for demographics, which is only one percent over twenty years. There is no population explosion in Charlottesville. There is a need for affordable housing, and I think everybody who's calling in tonight says that's, let's work on getting affordable housing, but let's do it together. The city of Charlottesville and its residents should be congratulated for what they have done. Ten million dollars a year is devoted from our budget for affordable housing. Charlottesville spends more money per capita on affordable housing, a hundred and forty dollars per capita, than any other jurisdiction in the entire state, Richmond devotes only thirty-five dollars. Our unemployment rate is four-point-two percent. Nationally, it's five-point-four percent. I'm running out of time, so I've got to run to the end. I agree with the comments that the pandemic kind of didn't help you in getting the buy-in of the community. I'm asking you to get the buy-in of the community. And so to increase affordable housing, there are many alternatives to this plan. Many things can be done and have been suggested. So I ask that you come to our neighborhoods, listen to us, we talk to you, we engage, and you go neighborhood by neighborhood and get buy-in. And then you'll have, we, the city, will have a successful.
Thank you very much, Don.
And Chair Mitchell, that was our final speaker before we were going to address council and commission. We still have fifty-two attendees with their hands up.
What I'd like to do with the permission of the commission, you guys can redirect if you like, is take a break. When we come back, do the left-to-right thing, giving every commissioner five minutes to ask questions or make comments and go around, give council a chance to chime in, then toss the ball back to the public. Once the public has done their thing, they come back to the commission. Is that comfortable for everyone? Give me one of these or something. Great, Liz.
So I'm, I'm curious, you say we're going to do questions and comments, or we're going to save our comments for the very end?
I'm concerned that if we save our, our comments from the very end, we may lose counsel. And so I would ask us to do questions and comments, so the council gets to hear any comments we've got.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to clarify that.
Is that all right? Is that okay?
Yeah, fine with me. I just wanted to make sure that I, before I started, I, I usually go right into comments. I don't even ask questions, but make sure that the time would be okay.
It just heads up because, you know, this is my last chance to do this to you. We're going to go right to left. So we'll start with you. All right, five minutes.
Chair Mitchell, I'm, sorry, this is Counselor Hill. I don't know that council, we have noticed this meeting is a joint meeting. We're here listening, but I just want to caution us from participating. Maybe Ms. Robinson can.
Typically, I do invite you guys to, to make a comment, but.
That's when we have a joint meeting, I think.
I, I think that's up to your discretion. I don't think there's a legal issue one way or another.
I think we're getting down to these short strokes, and I think it's important that they you guys, if, if you're willing to, to chime in. Again, I'll leave it up to you. If you want to speak, great. If you don't, that's cool. Can we now do five minutes, please? Five minutes. All righty, hopefully everyone is back or on their way back. I think Jody is trying to prevent me from going right to left. Oh, there he is. And is Jenny back? And is Ms. Creasy back?
Yep, I'm here.
Mr. Lentrow, do you have questions for RH?
I, let me see. So I have five minutes for questions and comments?
Yes. We'll come back to you later, but for now, yeah.
Okay. I, I would like to know from Rhodesite and Hardwell, for the R1 district. For the R1 district, well, that you're proposing the upzoning. Three, three units, and then the possibility of fourth that's affordable. Two questions. One, I have been doing a lot of reading, and most of the literature that I have come across has concluded that simply adding density does little to nothing to adding affordability to a city or affordable units to a city. And number, so why is that still a recommendation? And number two, what's magical about the fourth unit being affordable? Why wouldn't developers simply add, turn single-family parcels into three family, three residential units? Take the money and run. Is the fourth unit based upon some kind of data, some studies? Why is that?
Sure, thanks, Jody, and I'll welcome others to chime in on the response as well. But in terms of the general residential district, you know, you're mentioning the R1 districts. You know, we, we agree that adding density alone does not add affordable units to the city. I want to make sure that that's clear. I agree with you on that. Or not inherently, you know, adding affordable units at maybe the levels that Charlottesville's greatest need is at in particular. There is an opportunity to provide units that are more sort of naturally affordable. If they're at a sort of a size that maybe is not available in a neighborhood right now, so it may make, have more affordable options within the neighborhood relatively speaking. But I think there are, you know, pairing these line use map with the Affordable Housing Plan, different priorities identified in there for funding. You know, funding for homeownership opportunities, for example. You know, the map on its own needs to be paired with some of those initiatives as well. So that's, that would be my response to that. In terms of the fourth unit, we did hear a large number of comments calling for showing up to four or five units in the general residential areas. So this was a comment that not only, you know, it came through a lot of conversations we have with folks as well as through the email, which is where it really came out. So we wanted to consider it. We, at the time we were proposing, we were concerned that just adding, you know, that that could be a way to get to a way where there is some affordability sort of required within that sort of base by right, general residential levels, maybe even outside of some of those larger initiatives from the Affordable Housing Plan and whatnot, because I think this, this scale of housing, you know, like I mentioned, can, can be really sort of naturally affordable. But if we, you know, require some required level affordability, that could be a way to get some of that deeply, more deeply affordable housing available within those general residential areas. I'm not sure if that made complete sense. If others, Lee or Chrissy had thoughts on that, please feel free.
You're right, Jody, there's no specific evidence that that fourth unit is somehow magically more affordable. And it is, it is just a trade-off that we felt was reasonable for adding to our original three. That if you were going to add more, we needed some guarantee that some portion might be affordable. Interestingly enough, I think in most cases, the existing house would be used as the affordable unit because it's more affordable to renovate an existing house than typically than it is to build a new. So you're most likely to see the thing that is the affordable unit be the existing house if someone goes all the way to the extent of wanting four units on their lawn.
Thank you, Lee and Jenny. So Hosea, I do have some conclusions and comments to make, but I'm out of time.
I think while you got the floor, you ought to go ahead and make your conclusions and comments.
Make them now?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So I'll make sure the council gets those before they leave, so yes, please.
Okay, I've given this a lot of thought. I've been up until now, keeping an open mind, wanting to listen to all the hard work from our consultants. Doing a lot of reading, podcasts. I think it's time that I came up with some conclusions. The density issue. RC Elko, about 10 years ago, did a study that said we needed more housing across the board, and that that would naturally trickle down. And I threw this at Tania many a times over many years. I apologize, I'm wrong. I have, I've read too much that has said that given the land has become more valuable now than the buildings that are on it. And given the opportunity to provide more housing units on the same parcel of land through upzoning, developers will build more units, but at market rates that will not meet the affordability definition. Because of the desirability of living in Charlottesville and the surplus of people that can afford the purchase of rental of market rate units, there will never be a trickle-down impact that provides affordable units. Therefore, I don't support upzoning R1 districts that would allow more market rate units. Instead, I support affordable housing overlay districts that for R1 district would allow up to three additional living units provided they meet the definition of affordability at various AMI levels and are permanently affordable. Similarly, I support affordable housing overlay districts for all land used districts, residential, commercial, business, and industrial. Secondly, protecting what we like about Charlottesville. The number one comment by the survey respondents is concern for community character, history, height, or scale. In other words, those existing physical features that make Charlottesville distinctive and livable. The identification and recognition of our historic districts represent for residents what is special and unique about Charlottesville, and they must be protected. Land has become more valuable than the buildings on it, as I said before, even the historic ones. The current demolition requirements protecting our designated historic buildings, they're weak. In most cases, a developer would simply have to wait 12 to 18 months for a demolition application to run its course before destroying a historic building. An inconvenience that can be built into the business plan. Therefore, I cannot support upzoning any property within an existing historic or conservation district. Instead, I would support an affordable housing overlay district that allows compatible infill and accessory dwelling units that solely provide permanent affordable housing. And that's, I'll stop there.
What an evolution over the years, wow. So Mr. Soliets.
I had to organize my thoughts this afternoon.
Mrs. Soliets. Mr. Soliets.
Hello, apologies for the technical difficulties. I had to switch machines midstream. I hope nothing terrible happened to you. Oh, what a night. So broadly, tons of changes. I spent most of my weekend trying to understand all the changes, and I think I understand them. The one that really sort of surprised me was sort of that the area near the university. Just sort of very high cost, as Mr. Lindro said, very expensive land. And the houses are expensive, too. It's a high-cost area near the university, sort of on the northern end of the city. And there we see. It's interesting to me because the Opportunity Atlas really calls that out as a spectacular place where low-income children can build a life, can move up in our society uniquely versus anywhere else in the city. Pretty special place. So I was expecting really great things there. And I only saw really large reductions in potential affordable housing there. I didn't understand it. I understand that there has been public comment calling for less, especially among the highest income homeowners. That's sort of the biggest group that's really been pushing this story, and I, I hear it and I understand it. But I'm concerned about scale. Have we gone too far? Is there, is there a happy balance between all middle and all general? That's possibly some definition to balance people who need things versus people who like aesthetics within a certain realm. Moving to aesthetics, I believe in aesthetics. I teach aesthetics. Buildings that look the same but have different contents? I don't understand why we are regulating the contents if they look the same. If there are 12 homes inside or two homes inside, or it's just one gigantic disgusting mansion. Why is that a problem for us? If it's just aesthetics we are concerned about, why are we regulating the residents? I, the Belmont Park is an interesting example where it is a beautiful place, and I hope more people can enjoy it. But buildings that look the same versus buildings that look the same? Aesthetically, it seems the same to me. I hope that helps somewhat. Otherwise, a lot of what I see makes sense and I understand it. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dow. Oh, Ms. Dow, by the way, welcome back. Are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
First of all, welcome back, and are you, have you mended? Is everything good? Is your daughter safe and everything's happy? Everything's good again?
Well, first I would like to say thanks for having me back, and we are still mending. But we are grateful. Things could have been a whole lot worse than what they were. So in this type of situation, you just look at the bright side and try to keep pushing forward.
I'm glad things are all right. She was in a pretty bad accident a couple of weeks ago, so we lost her for about a month, but she's back now, so we missed you.
Thank you, and I do apologize, but I am, I was eager to participate tonight. Jody, thank you for your revelation. It is very much so appreciated. I too have some heartburn about the density that comes with this plan. I would also want to support, as Jody has already said, and I'm not going to reiterate a bunch of things, we've been here for a while tonight. But I do want to support the overlay district of affordable housing throughout the entire city. It's hard, and even listening to her response to Jody, I believe her name was Jenny, I'm sorry, to not be able to really fully answer the question of if density does not create affordable housing, then why are we increasing density in these R1 neighborhoods is very troubling for me. Also, it doesn't seem like it's just troubling for me, but from the comments that we've received tonight and also from the additional comments we're going to receive, it seems like it's very troubling to our citizens as well. The one other thing I did want to say is I do appreciate some of the clarifications throughout the presentation tonight, like one of was denoting the different types of nodes or what denotes the different types of nodes or intersections that she added in the presentation tonight. So I did want to say thank you for that. And just for everyone's time and commitment, this is not an easy task, but we are hitting at it and moving forward.
Thank you very much. I forget, who's Rory? Are you next? No, no, Mr. Bob, Mr. Bob.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Sorry, we just haven't sent him the diocese to like. Can't remember the orders.
See if I can keep my comments organized, but I just want to say thanks for all the work, and I'm happy to see a huge response from the community today and also via email for the past couple of days. And from some young UVA students who are concerned about their impact on the city's vulnerable communities. I think we had 100-plus emails, the majority of which were saying kind of like, you know, the changes were headed in a little bit off the deep end on the wrong direction. But I do want to also thank you for including pieces on the rezoning to come and kind of explaining a little bit what is, what we're looking at in the rezoning process. I want to start and say, I think we need more assertive language regarding affordable housing and the affordability of the affordable housing throughout all different intensities and zoning requirements, not generally just the not just the general residential one. I think it could apply to most of them. I don't really get the, why the overlay does not mesh well with the corner node. I guess, the thing that we're doing, I think they could work together when we're looking at the medium and high intensity and how that could overlay with more affordable housing. And I think there was a letter by Hack earlier that we could, I think, maybe explore having the affordable unit come in the beginning of the development instead of the end of the development, instead of like the fourth unit becoming affordable one, maybe it's in the beginning of the process, that way we can ensure that. I want to look at the change of the, I think there was some language change to limited commercial instead of like neighborhood scale or neighborhood supporting uses. I don't know if that was on purpose or if that was changed. But I understand the logic that the nodes and some of those medium intensity zones kind of share the same meaning in that sense, and I don't find that problematic that that was changed. I think since we rolled back on some of the medium and node intensity throughout, we can probably bring some of that back into the general residential. I think three and a half floor of homes exist, and that's not a concern. I don't really get why we moved back to two and a half floors. And even the unit count, I think I'm supportive of the increase of the units in the general residential. Echoing what Lila said earlier, if it looks like a house, and it doesn't matter really. But if you look at page 19 and 20 of the sensitive communities areas, you'd notice that a lot of them have a lot of different intensities and nodes within those communities, and the rest of the map has most of the general residential, so it seems like we're not really changing or anything in those sensitive communities in a way that would, it seems like we're preserving all the different neighborhoods and downzoning them in this latest plan. And the areas that have been impacted still continue to be impacted since they're already majority, not general residential. I don't know, but it's something that we should probably take a closer look at. And sorry, one second. I think part of it, we could also consider moving townhomes and cottage courts from the medium intensity to general residential. I don't see a problem with that. They look like regular homes you see walking down the street, especially the cottage courts. That would be very fitting in general residential neighborhoods and help us achieve more affordable housing. Especially all this, I want to reiterate, ties into having more assertive language to ensure that we have affordable housing and not just density. Those are most of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for staying within five minutes. Mrs. Stolzenberg, your challenge to do the same.
Sure, I'll start with a question to Jenny or to the team. How do you decide whose opinions matter? We've heard many hundreds of people's feedback. Many people are arguing for one thing while others argue for the direct opposite. We've done surveys, we've had input, we've had pop-ups. We've received, I think in many cases, not a particularly representative sample of the populace. I think in the survey, it was 11% renters. I think we've heard tonight from a whole bunch of homeowners in a couple of very specific neighborhoods. When people are saying different things, how do you decide which changes, which feedback, whose opinions will be heated?
Thanks for that question. I'm glad you recognized, you know that we haven't heard from people who are necessarily representative of the community. That's why we've been looking at demographics when we can, like on the survey, for example. Two, two comments on that. One, one is that we have been going back to the equity and affordability sort of overarching sort of goal that we came to this process with. And, you know, we have the Affordable Housing Plan, and we're trying to make sure the line use map can react with or play with that and make change effective. But in terms of who, who we are listening to, we are trying to make that equity and affordability piece maintain strength, and we think we have. Well, also making compromise. We, you know, we're not swinging one wildly. Well, also making compromise. We, you know, we're not swinging wildly one way or the other. I would, I would say if we, if we did that, if we really set, you know, listen specifically to certain neighborhoods, a lot of these neighborhoods would, outside of those sensitive communities even would, would not have any additional increase in potential intensity at all. So we have tried to strike a balance between, we think it's important to, you know, keep some of that base level of residential intensity throughout. But also, I mean, we can't, it's, it's a balance. We've made compromises, but we don't think they compromise the final goals, is what I would say. And I'd welcome feedback from others, but I don't want to take all your time.
Okay. Then I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about this, this claim that there's no, there's no help from density or from housing supply. Is it the case that denser housing in our city is more expensive or even as expensive as detached housing in our city? Is it the case that more supply will not bring down the cost of housing at all? I'm not saying that we don't need subsidies to reach, of course, our deepest affordability levels, but we hear more and more that people higher and higher at the income level, our teachers, first our teachers, then our firefighters, people getting paid more and more can't afford to live here. Does it not help? And if supply doesn't help, should we tear down housing to make it better?
Thank you for asking that too. I appreciate a chance to clarify earlier comments. What I was speaking to was increasing density and land use certainly does not necessarily naturally help the lowest income households, that level of affordability. That's, you know, something that's clear in the affordable housing plan. It's laid out that, that requires subsidy. And that's why, as you mentioned, we, we have that as an element. But in, I mean, in terms of this, and I was sort of trying to get this when I was responding to, to Jody's comment earlier. Having different sizes of units available throughout different neighborhoods. You know, a smaller unit is going to be more affordable, sort of naturally. And so I, I, again, appreciate the chance to clarify that, you know, I think there are benefits to be had in terms of affordability from market rate affordability to have these smaller potentials, potentially types of, smaller types of units. And when I'm saying smaller, I mean, not a standalone, single family home, but an apartment or a small multifamily unit. I know I thought I just lost, but I hope that helps. Does that help to clarify my intention with that comment earlier?
Yeah, I, I do think that's helpful. And so I think when, when talking about this fourth unit without an incentive, I, I don't understand where that's coming from or, or who will build that fourth unit. It sounds to me that like you're asking people to build it out of the goodness of their heart. And as we all know, developers do not do things out of the goodness of their heart. They are profit seeking. To me, it seems we need to create incentives if we want to get mandated affordable units. The flip side of that is there needs to be some reason to build them. And, you know, as far as I'm aware, I, I know Portland made its reform for six units on top of its base. Four units in their general residential, they had six units of half or affordable, but they were hoping for nonprofits to build those. And my understanding in talking to our local housing nonprofits is that we have a couple rental oriented ones that don't build buildings that size. You need at least 40 or 50 to get to a live tech application. And then we have housing or, or homeownership oriented ones like Habitat and the Community Land Trust. And for them, I think what they're really seeking is for townhomes and in particularly stacked townhomes. They keep saying stacked townhomes, that's the fastest path to get affordability because land is so expensive and you can half the cost of land. I, I just don't understand why, for all this talk about homeownership opportunities, affordable homeownership, access to homeownership, attainable homeownership, we're not talking more about townhomes and about stacked townhomes. Both for nonprofit builds, for deeply affordable and for market rate. Yeah.
So Rory, let's get an answer. And then can you, if you don't mind, begin thinking about some input for council and some input for, for the consultants, things that you want to see them do, or was that it?
I mean, that was, that was about it. My input is we need townhomes. I mean, I'd add, I don't really see the corridor thing. I think if I'm in a corridor with bus service and there's a bus stop every eight, every eight blocks, if I'm four blocks from a bus stop, I'm a lot worse off than if I live a block off the corridor or right from a bus stop. So, I mean, that, that's the other big feedback. Also, 2.5 floors and 35 feet means 14 foot ceiling heights. That is not a recipe, I think, for naturally affordable housing.
Good. So Ms. Russell, you're up next.
All right, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I want to echo supportive of the inclusion of an affordable housing overlay. I think that, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think we have to be intentional about affordability if we want to see it and not sort of just open it up and hope it, hope it sort of happens. And, and I really see the affordable overlay as, you know, being intentional. I also see some conflict in the, in the rhetoric of the land use chapter and how the future land use map looks. In, I, I, I support the vision statements on slide 25. And in the FAQ that was shared earlier, it states that the plan prioritizes retention of structures wherever possible with a focus on adaptive reuse and infill rather than demolition. But I have yet to see how this is actually carried out. To Lyle's point about a house is a house and we shouldn't regulate what's inside, I, I, I agree, but we don't have anything providing that, you know, larger single family homes would get subdivided as opposed to speculative demolition. It also seems like in this scenario, our wealthier neighborhoods might actually be protected from that speculative demolition because the economics would not likely work out to tear down a, a, a large home with a value, you know, embodied value in it. So what I would wonder is how we would protect the more modest structures in our neighborhoods that are already serving a, a purpose. You know, modest houses along Elliot, for example, that are, you know, rentals or, or modest homes. And then finally, for the sensitive areas, I just want to be sure that we, in addition to potentially limiting wealth accumulation, which, which Jenny did mention, I question if in already gentrifying neighborhoods, we wouldn't actually be sort of reinforcing the gentrifiers or, or sort of benefiting them in benefiting people in renovating older homes, older existing duplexes and turning them into large, single family homes. How does that, how does that actually benefit the neighborhood? I would encourage us to work with legal aid and the neighborhood leaders to continue this conversation about protecting those, those sensitive areas. I don't think I have any questions. So I, I do want to note that it, it seems that the definition of missing middle housing is two and a half to three stories. So if that's what we say we want, then, you know, that, that, that explains the reduction from 3.5 stories. Finally, I think that we should be advocating for a range, a, and a choice in housing, a range of housing opportunities in a way that's sensitive to the built form of our existing neighborhoods. I think that's what feeble plans is working towards, and I think it's our role as planning commissioners to guide the density more specifically and not leave it to the market to decide what is built and what is, what is affordable or more likely not. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I tend to be a cheerleader, but I'm not going to be a cheerleader tonight. I'm just going to tell you how I feel about this because this is my last meeting to be a cheerleader. Because it's going to be somebody else's responsibility to, to, to moderate these meetings in the future. And I'll just tell you how I feel. I, the latest iteration disappoints. The, the, the affordable housing plan that the consultants put together was designed to promote zoning and development that increased multifamily development in a way that, that buoyed equity and, and buoyed affordability in Charlottesville. I think back to the invasion of Charlottesville many years ago by Mr. Bart Thalberto when he brought his ideas about exclusionary zoning to Charlottesville and it was embraced. And I'm not seeing where, what this, where we are today is, is combating that, combating the rapturous, rapturousness of the exclusionary zoning that he brought to Charlottesville. The affordable housing overlay that was proposed on July 13th, July 13th, went a long way to buoying the, or helping to buoy, because it all helps. Because as Jenny said over and over again, you can't do it just by zoning and, and, and a land use map. But it went a long ways to buoying the affordable housing stock in Charlottesville. And it looks like we've moved away from that. I'd like to see us re-embrace that. And I would like to see the affordable housing overlay actually get embedded in, in the future land use map so that when we move to the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance has some, some, some governing principles that, that define that. I, I also believe that four stories in general residential districts is not a bad thing where it makes sense. Hopefully we'll keep that in mind. I also think that eight units, it, it, it dwells in, in, in those districts where it makes sense is something we ought to, we ought to give some thought to. But I do believe that we need to do all these things that I'm just talking, I've just talked about and also protect the, protect the sensitive low income areas. With that, I'm going to ask council if they have any comments. Mr. Schuch.
Chair Mitchell, thank you. I have a number of comments and a couple of questions I'll ask at the end. The first thing is I think we have to remember that the future land use map is part of the comprehensive plan. It is only about three pages of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, the purpose of a comp plan is to plan to deal with current and emerging problems. It is not particularly frankly, to only preserve existing neighborhoods, though in some instances that could be a problem that we're trying to address. In this particular case, I think we're looking for a comp plan. And you got to remember, of course, this is the comp plan that was supposed to have been rewritten three years ago, but it founded on many of these same issues because we didn't apparently want to be, or we're not able to confront some of these, these difficult problems. The three values that I think have to underlie what we're doing are, number one, racial equity, number two is climate change, and number three is dealing with all varieties of affordable housing. We have to recognize that at the moment Charlottesville is becoming increasingly unaffordable for virtually everybody. And that includes people who are making 100% of AMI, not just 80% or 40% or 50%. We all have heard the stories of people, as one testimonial this evening made clear of folks who have tried to buy something in Charlottesville or even to rent something in Charlottesville that they couldn't find. Or we know about the houses, the one around the corner from me that had been assessed at 420 was listed at 470 and sold at 520. Or another house I know of in Greenbrier that was assessed in the 400s and sold recently for 705. We know that we're having prices fast outpace the, the, the expected rate of inflation. The reason obviously is demand. There is more demand than there is supply. We have more people who want to live in Charlottesville than we do places for them to live, and that is true at all levels of income. And I think when we confront, when we characterize this issue as does market rate housing have to be built? And if so, is it going to help out the, the under 30% AMI neighborhoods? Obviously, the answer is no, not there. But supposing we did something about both categories? Supposing we did something that not only increased the housing supply for people who are looking for the, you know, the, the $300,000 house that doesn't exist anymore in Charlottesville, that kind of thing. So I think we have both that we have to deal with. There is a question about population growth. The Weldon Cooper Center some years ago came out with something that projected 1% growth between now and 10 years from now or something. The same Weldon Cooper Center in 2015 projected that we were going to have substantially higher growth. And the reason was that they were responding very specifically to the, the growth and the numbers, the pure statistics that had come from the massive increase in apartments on West Main Street. The point is that the Weldon Cooper Center doesn't deal with discontinuities. They deal with projecting the last trend. And I think it's clear that one of the trends we've got is that the university continues to grow. It continues to grow on, on an average about 1% a year. And if you annualize it over the last 40 years, that's about what we get to. Charlottesville's housing stock has not grown correspondingly. It was doing okay until about 2015, but since that time it has slowed down. And during that time is when we've seen the inflation. So that's a problem that we need to deal with. It's a comp plan issue and that makes it a land use map issue as well. I haven't mastered all of the, oh, I, one other point related to that. When we talk about missing middle, we're not talking only about form, we're talking about missing middle income. We're talking about the people who can't afford to live in Charlottesville anymore, and that's a change. The, the couple of things, I have basically two questions. One is, is there any way that the developer, that the consultants could kind of work up some pro formas of what it would look like if, if you were to, to take a lot with a price of X number of dollars and build that however many units? Because that would be very helpful to try to figure out, and I'm not sure I've got the competence to work it up myself. The other is a broader question which I would ask is, to what extent do, does any variety of these plans envision that the limits of the, limits on the units based on, for example, the size of the lot? Putting eight units on a quarter acre lot would look very different from putting eight units on a half acre lot. Does that enter to the calculations? And could you have, for example, a setback requirement that said, we'll give you that extra story as long as it's a certain number of feet away from the boundary line? That's the kind of thing that I'd be curious about how it would make this whole thing a lot, feel a lot more livable.
Excellent. I'll ask Lee to respond to the second question or Christie from Code Studio. But in terms of your first question about, can we work up pro formas about what it would look like to develop lots? That's built into the process that HRNA has been brought on to do in the zoning, which is the inclusionary zoning aspect. They've got it written into their scope to do that. It's not something we had planned and that's really where our capacity is to do it. But they, you know, they may have examples we could share. I, I will speak with, with them and see what we may be able to provide that can give some idea of what we're thinking in terms of, you know, what would it take to develop lots? But I know to get into the specific details, that'll be part of that analysis, which will be starting, but it's not done yet.
It's not for tonight anyway.
And then Lee or Christie, do you want to respond to the question about, you know, does this envision limits on units based on the size of the lot? You know, are there ways we can give a setback, extra stories if there are setbacks from the street, et cetera?
Absolutely, yes. This is Lee. There are lots of tools for making larger buildings more acceptable when they show up next to smaller buildings. There are lots of transitional tools and certainly stepping height down is one of those. I'm, I'm not certain, we would have to, to talk a fair amount about when to apply a rule like that. It would have to do with the width of the lot more than the acreage of the lot. And that's why in many cases we're Um and that's why uh in many cases we're we're more interested uh uh in in that issue of sort of how much bulk and mass we can actually fit on the lot has much more to do with the lot width uh in many cases than it does the area. Uh the other thing that I think is missing from some of this discussion is that the lot, you have many, many lots uh which are much larger than the minimum lot size in the existing zoning district, much less whatever the lot size might be in the future zoning district. So you have lots which could be subdivided um whether through a split um or through a more complex subdivision in the creation of a new street. Um but in your uh lowest density district today, you have a very, very large uh acreage size. Some of that may be due to topography. Some of it may be due to, you know, the stream corridors or wetlands or other things. There are plenty of reasons why those lots might be larger. That doesn't mean that they are perfect to be split and made into subdivisions, but I want to put on the table that part of this discussion um uh should include the acknowledgement that on a large lot, rather than just simply adding to the units in one building that fits on it, um one thing we would prefer to see is a series of buildings. One of the ways we can get that is by subdividing it. Um so um uh I just uh want to mention that. But yes, uh there are probably lots of tools that we could look at um once we've been given um slightly uh more direct guidance, which I believe we're getting tonight. I appreciate it.
Let me um let me see if there are any other counselors that want to speak because I did promise the public that we get back to them. So any other counselors?
Good evening.
Ms. Walker.
Um I I think, you know, as I'm sitting here listening and um knowing how many years that this has been going on long before I was even on council, attempting to get the previous draft, um you know, the previous comp plan completed. And um hearing from people who I think are just now starting to pay attention, which is very typical um when, you know, it begins to um affect them and in a way that they um maybe don't necessarily want. I think we just have a lot of work to do in terms of um, you know, collective well-being for the community. A point that my colleague just made in terms of his three points, one, the first one being racial equity. And then it's it's totally conflicted with the creating housing opportunities for all people without prioritizing which housing to start with. And um I understand that a lot of people are challenged by um you know, Charlottesville, what has happened with um past developments, um the increase in pricing of housing and land. Um but there are certain members of our population who without um us prioritizing them and especially the lower AMI, they won't be able um to figure out in Charlottesville or existing um areas. Also Roy's point about who is listened to. Um it appears from looking at these two land drafts that um some of the changes from the high intensity to medium intensity shows um whose voices are being um listened to. And I think that um while it's important, we also have to take in consideration um the historical context of why these neighborhoods are the way they are. And I don't agree with, I think her name was Ms. Simmons, that it is not the responsibility of the current land um owners. It shouldn't look at as, you know, be looked at as an individual um responsibility. If we're talking about collective well-being, then we know how we arrived at a place. Um we are going to have to all work together um to change that. And so I'm hoping that um we look at some of the changes um that have been made, but also understand with some of the examples that um Lloyd just gave in the Greenbrier area, something being listed at four twenty, which is completely unaffordable um for most people, even if we're talking about eighty to a hundred percent AMI. And um just what those, what the affordable housing um overlay um would mean to guarantee that we are not just giving developers um kind of a blank canvas to build throughout the city without having to prioritize um affordable housing. Some really interesting comments about people who are just um noticing like what a development like Monticello Dairy, what that looks like um in a neighborhood. And um that's another area that we have to be concerned about just long term. Um that is attracting a lot of students, what that looks like for the neighborhoods that used to be predominantly um black neighborhoods and that is rapidly changing. And how do we assist um those families and um Ms. Russell made some very good points um too about limiting even with some of the recommendations from the hack, how does that limit um families that are currently in those areas who are not the families that we want to place those limitations on? So I I think we have a um lot of work to do, but I will say as all of the planning commission members know and all of the members of staff and council know that um this has been a very open process. We have been um you know, putting this information out to the public. This isn't something as a previous speaker said was underhanded. Um but we do have a lot to work to do to ensure the affordability, but I'll also ask the public to really think about why they're making the comments, and I've said this before, about whether the affordability is the um is there a real issue? I think any development, including the affordability, and especially when you start um labeling people who may live in those places as attributing to like noise and crime and things like that. And that's just not the case. I mean, people just deserve decent quality housing and um we don't have that to offer them as a city and a lot of those reasons why I have a lot of racial undertones.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors?
I'm sorry, I'm here and I'm listening. I apologize. There's just um other things going on in my household too that don't put me in the best position right now to comment. I just wasn't also sure about how many of us should be commenting at this time, but thank you for the opportunity.
And Mr. Payne, you you were about to try to.
Yeah, um I guess a couple of questions upfront for the consultants is could you just recap again, what were the reasons uh you deviated from the original recommendation of the affordable housing overlay? What was the motivation for one, reducing its scale? And then two, how do the incentives of what you've proposed differ from the original affordable housing overlay that was presented by the hack?
Thanks for that question. Uh to clarify, the sensitive communities layer that we're showing is meant to uh speak to the recommendation of the hack to have um some protection for those communities they outlined in the, what they identified as a place to have lower intensity residential. Um that's the on their map, it's uh uh Fifeville, Rose Hill and Tenth and Page. Uh so there was a recommendation um, you know, from them that, you know, these were draft areas. They wanted our input on how we thought that might play out. Um so we have identified similar areas, but we have uh the difference is that we're not necessarily saying they should be limited to current uh land use levels or current zoning levels, which is the, as I understand it, the recommendation from the proposal. But we're saying this needs more, you know, they need uh additional tools to prevent displacement. And that could mean in the zoning uh that it's, they do have less uh intensity there. Um but we can identify that here. Um so just wanted to clarify with that. And in terms of the overlay concept in general, uh the hack presented, we did not include that that in this proposal because we um again, we have used this sort of uh thought process of having a greater intensity, both in terms of mixed use and residential intensity along uh corridors or places where we can uh but focus improvements. And when I say that, I don't just mean in transit. I mean, you know, making sure uh it's the walkable, they're bikeable, they're, they have, you know, that they're really livable streets and places for people to to be and and travel. Uh and so that's why we're focused on these sort of corridors and and nodes. And we were concerned that with an overlay, if we're not um directing that greater intensity uh of residential uses or or other uses, that it may not be as conducive to some of those uh improvements that may be needed. But certainly hearing tonight, um where I think I'm hearing from planning commission is that you would all would like us to re- relook at that. So hearing that loud and clear.
And then how does the um how does what you've proposed uh connect with the inclusionary uh zoning ordinance that is going to be worked on, if at all?
Uh so with inclusionary zoning, uh for those who aren't as familiar, that would mean that in the zoning um certain categories um or locations would be required to include a certain level of affordable or certain number of units affordable at a certain level. Or there or there may be um incentives provided to provide affordable units. Uh and so we know that the greatest potential for that is often in areas that allow higher um intensity. Uh the the study uh that will happen with HRNA, and I'm sorry, they're not on the phone right now to provide more clarity here, but uh they will be looking at um potential for inclusionary zoning elements at a variety of scales within this land use framework or whatever the final land use framework is. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, um and I guess just, you know, final comments I have, you know, at this point are um, you know, if others have said, you know, I think it's very important to think about the the housing ecosystem throughout Charlottesville and zoning is one piece of that, which is very critical. And um opening up the opportunity for more affordable homeownership and rental opportunities throughout the entire city and directly confronting the reasons that those opportunities aren't available and allow more affordable duplexes, triplexes, townhomes to be built instead of having a system where you can only build an expensive single family home that's selling for six, seven hundred thousand dollars in many cases. And that that connects with our affordable housing plan as well in terms of, you know, prioritizing providing housing for people at ten, twenty, thirty percent of AMI. Um but again, providing opportunities for wealth building throughout the ecosystem and providing a laddership of home opportunity. And I do have some concerns, both with some of the changes and especially the affordable housing overlay, that maybe we've stepped back from that original goal, um at least to some extent. Um and that that has to be our priority for what we're working on. And I think it absolutely can be done and can be done in a way that you know, it does not connect with a lot of the fears there are. It's just allowing more homes that look like homes that again are duplexes, triplexes, that are opening up homeownership, rental opportunities and wealth building to more people in a way that is not disruptive and is not going to create any problems. And I think we can absolutely um get there, but we're not quite there yet. Um and then the final thought is, you know, we've been working on this for coming up uh on four years. We're two to three years behind um the original date that we plan to adopt a comprehensive plan update. And the reality is, is every day, you know, we aren't making these changes, both in our land use map, but more importantly, our zoning, which is where the rubber really hits the road, is uh every day, week, month and year, the status quo continues. And we know exactly what the status quo is. It's gentrification. It's displacement. It's um uh all the things uh that, you know, people continue to highlight as problems in our city. Um and so, you know, I do have some concern that, you know, we can't just continually drag this out for more years without making any changes. Uh because again, we know that the status quo as is, isn't working. Um and the longer we delay it is the longer that the status quo uh continues as is.
Right. Are there any other uh comments from council? Well, with that, I'll just uh echo what uh Council Payne said. And I'll echo what uh livable Charlottesville said. The longer we delay this, the longer we extend the housing crisis. So we we cannot delay this. We just need to move quickly on the input that you guys have gotten. And we need to remember, remember that this is an iterative device. So we, it will, it will repeat, repeat, repeat and modify, modify, modify. With that, um with the permission of the commission, I'm going to open it back up to public comment. Everybody, okay. Everyone said yes. So Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Chair. And uh next up we have Mary Whittle, followed by Nancy Baxley. Mary, you are on with the planning commission. You have three minutes.
Hi, hi, hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, sorry about that. It is bedtime. Um so uh one thing, I just want to quickly say, I I wish, I wish this whole thing had been kind of approached in a different way because it's been just so divisive and I I I just, I'm sad to hear um the citizens of our community kind of so upset with one another. And I also wish we'd been able to talk in person. Um one thing I just want to say is that um it seems to me that the entire um dialogue, such as it's a dialogue, has been about um, you know, whose neighborhood is going to be ruined or whose neighborhood has been ruined in the past. And I just want to say that it seems to me that we're ignoring some very obvious and frankly, just very positive solutions that we could take. And I haven't heard anybody talk about these. Um council, it seems to me that you've acted as though there are no possible solutions to Charlottesville's affordable housing challenges except to rezone the entire city. Um and that's been upsetting to people in various different ways. Some people want more and some people don't. But the reality is that there are a couple of immediately actionable steps that you guys, the city could take if you chose to. First of all, why not consider taking land that you already own on Melbourne Road, on Water Street, where the downtown farmer's market is, off Preston Avenue, close to the Jefferson School, which is land that the city frankly you could be argued you own illegally um as a result of demolishing past neighborhoods. Now, how about doing something like providing that land to developers through a fifty year lease free? In exchange, you get those developers to commit to building one hundred percent, one hundred percent free housing. None of your baloney where you guys get tricked. You want, we want a hundred percent affordable multifamily units. Some of those could be for sale. Some of them could be townhomes. Some of them could be rent. But they're all the way from affordable to deeply affordable. The second thing you guys need to ask for, tell those developers you want the city to be involved in the architectural review process. So we get something nice for people. Okay? And then you get a commitment from them. What you're going to do there is dramatically cut the costs of homeownership because people aren't paying for the cost of the land. They're paying for the cost of the home. All right, bingo. There's one thing you can do. UVA is actually in the process of doing this right now. It's a land lease process. They've got it going on. You guys would just have to duplicate it. Their UVA is also promising to do a thousand homes. If you guys did this on Melbourne, I want my time here. And if you did it downtown, you guys would easily get to your three thousand units. Not only that, you would reach all the goals that you wanted. Okay? People would be in great neighborhoods. There'd be close to schools, parks, um walking, biking, transit. That area on Melbourne is beautiful. You're in a great school district. Um and downtown likewise. Guys, think about some of these other things. I'd also like you guys to grant current single family homeowners the right to rent a single apartment or accessory unit. Okay? And that's going to give you some elasticity in the market and it's going to diversify the neighborhoods, which we really need. Okay? I know my time is up. I want to see you guys think about some other solutions besides just rezoning. Who gets it? Who doesn't? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Nancy Baxley, followed by Kevin Hildebrand. Nancy, you're on with the planning commission. You have three minutes.
Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, perfect. Um I just want to be quick about this. Uh I think there have been a lot of excellent comments on both sides. I am concerned that Charlottesville, um you know, having in the past been voted as, you know, a wonderful place to live and a great place to retire and all of these type of things. And hearing um Mr. Snook mentioned that houses that are listed at four hundred and twenty thousand are sold at five hundred and twenty thousand. Um and again, And again, those are single family home dwellings that are selling at that. They're not buying duplexes and that kind of thing. I am concerned about developers coming in and turning Charlottesville into Generica. And I, I look at what happened on West Main. I look at different developments that are happening. I see the same architectural designs that have been put in other cities because developers know that can make monies. These these four over ones and these kinds of things. Do you see the exact same look? You drive through so much of America now. You look at everything. You have no idea what town you're in. You have no idea where you are. I'm afraid that Charlottesville is going to lose its Charlottesville'sness, or however you want to put it. By turning this over to an ad hoc, who's going to make the most money? And if you leave it up to a developer, they are going to go for the lowest amount of money on their end that gets it done. Again, another, another concern has always been about the tree canopy. We are very important about this in this city. Latest articles that in historically black neighborhoods, there have been, the tree canopies have been eradicated. This needs to be preserved. And I see that in a couple of these slides that I looked at that you can the, the land use map allows the building up through to four feet from the property line. And this type of thing encourages trees to be cut down and, and, and all of that. My proposal with my last minute here is that to do more of a surgical approach to this, a more incremental implementation. Target certain areas, do this overlay. It's fine to have the grand plan, but, but start it out incrementally. Let's pick these areas. Let's, let's do the areas that, that we can show the town, hey, believe in us. We know what we're doing. Here's what we're doing in this area. See how we can do it. Well, you do it well architecturally. You preserve the historically black businesses. You, you bring in our architecture firms that, that are from historically black people that, that can design these things. Let's do this in, in smaller areas to get bigger buy-in. And I appreciate the time you all are putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next up, we have Kevin Hildebrand, followed by James Groves. Kevin, you're on with the planning commission.
Hello, Kevin. Welcome. You're gonna have to take, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I apologize for that. I know we've talked about this before, so I'm going to talk about something a little different. And that is, I'm concerned about the plans reliance on corridors for a medium intensity development. Those corridors tend to align with major circulation zones through the city. And right now they are pretty congested with a single family use of driveways going on to those streets. Now, if, as the plan gets built out, if those corridors are developed to their capacity, you're now looking at instead of one or two cars going from a driveway, you're looking at eight to 12. And is that going to be sustainable across a major circulation zone through the city? And is, is that circulation zone really appropriate for the medium intensity use as opposed to a more nodal approach, which I fully support of identifying nodes that then can feed on to these major corridors to support circulation. The other thing in the new plan that bothered me a bit was the notion of house size as a defining characteristics. I think that's very arbitrary. Certainly a house on Park Street is very different than a house on Cherry Avenue where I live, which is a one story, 960 square foot, two bedroom, one bath house as opposed to one of the larger historic mansions that are on Park Street. So you have to come up with a way to define that. That's a little bit clearer. And it may be tied to the character of the street or the adjacent properties, but to just say it's house size. I think it leaves too much room for negotiation. In this latest plan, I was very pleased to see that the Cherry Avenue Christian Church quadrant of Cleveland Avenue and Cherry Avenue has been taken out as a community business node. I think that was a wise decision to eliminate that. I was a little concerned to see that Oaklawn plantation has been removed from the medium density future development possibility. Since it's so closely approximate to Buford and the commercial district that already exists on Cherry Avenue. That I know is the Fife residence and Nancy O'Brien currently lives there. But if something were to happen to that house, would that, would the best use for that land in that portion, in that part of Cherry Avenue be general residential? Or would it be more appropriate for a medium density development because of its location next to Buford? And its proximity to existing commercial and its proximity to Forest Hills Park? Thank you very much. I appreciate your taking my time or allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have James Groves, followed by Barbara Heritage. James, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, James.
Good evening. I'm James Groves, a city resident who teaches about sustainability, climate change and energy systems at UVA. I support the goal of affordable housing, but I'm concerned that the medium intensity residential zones are not the right instrument for achieving that goal. Specifically, these zones will lead to demolition permits and single family house tear downs. Slide 26 tonight on middle, a missing middle housing does not illustrate five to 12 unit structures compatible with modification of existing single family homes. Indeed, the missing middle housing book from which that image is taken does not present a single example of a single family home being retrofit into more than four units. Also, slide 40 tonight shows missing middle medium construction beginning from empty lots. Medium intensity residential zoning will lead to demolition that is incompatible with the environmental chapter of the city's draft comprehensive plan. Goal number one of that chapter proposes a 45% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions this decade and carbon neutrality by 2050. Demolition will increase our city's greenhouse gas emissions, not decrease them. A study by the National Trust for Historic Preservation examined Portland, Oregon and notes that retrofit and reuse of homes there instead of demolition would deliver 15%, 15% of that city's needed greenhouse gas savings over the next decade. That study also reports that even if new residential construction is energy efficient in operation, it can take between 15 and 50 years to overcome the negative climate change impacts of new construction. Science tells us we must cut emissions now, not in decades. Medium intensity residential zones are also problematic because they are likely, of their likely impact upon stormwater management and the city's tree canopy. In terms of rain, the recent UN report on climate change indicates that the eastern US will increasingly experience intense downpours. Slide 36 tonight lists environmental issues, but fails to mention climate change. Medium intensity zoning will fill small lots with five to 12 units, create more impervious surfaces and likely overwhelm the city's stormwater management system. Additionally, as existing tree cover is eliminated to accommodate larger structures on lots, the city will lose beautiful, carbon absorbing trees that provide cooling shade. Elimination of trees will add to the well-known heat island effect in our urban environment and increase the energy burden of our most vulnerable. Thus, I recommend elimination of the medium intensity residential category. In upcoming meetings, I'll highlight meaningful alternatives. In closing, I ask, where is the city's climate action plan as part of this three to four year long process? And finally, I hope we all collectively enjoy tomorrow's downpour brought to us in part by climate change. Thank you.
Nicely done. Yes.
Next, we have Barbara Heritage, followed by Kaki Brooks. Barbara, you're on with the planning commission.
Barbara, welcome.
Hi, thanks for your time. My comments really build on the ones we just heard. But first I want to begin with another concern that I have about community feedback. I hear that this group has made an effort to be open about the process it's undertaking and to share information. At the same time, my house is slated for prospective upzoning. And I only learned about this plan when reading the New York Times earlier this month. I received no email, no flyer, no phone call, nor any other communication about the comprehensive plan until I learned about the plan in the New York Times and got involved in the process this month. Yesterday, I went door to door, talking to neighbors on my block and nine out of the 12 individuals whom I talked to and who have property that is also slated for upzoning had never heard about this plan. In other words, 75% of the people I talked to had no idea about what's happening tonight, this meeting, the map, even though they are being directly affected. What's even more surprising is that the city was told back in May and June that many people didn't know about the plan and this planning group took no steps to contact the actual homeowners whose property is being discussed here by Greenbrier Elementary. So when I wrote to Seville Plans Together to inquire whether there would be an additional opportunity to contribute to the survey, I was told that there wouldn't be no more opportunity to contribute to feedback in that, in that way to the survey itself. So my question for you to ponder is, what, why have you not contacted the actual homeowners in the Greenbrier Elementary neighborhood who are being affected by this plan? Why do so many people have no idea about the plan to date when I went knocking on doors? And do you think that this is an acceptable and ethical way to proceed at this time? My second question or concern, as it were, has to do with the environment. We are in the midst of a climate crisis. I belong to eight environmental activist organizations that work to educate individuals about the cost of overdevelopment and poor land stewardship. Charlottesville has pledged to become carbon neutral by 2050. And the current plan says it will strive to retain, retain tree cover as well as replant trees. But this plan will still entail the destruction of thousands of mature trees, particularly in the Greenbrier neighborhood where we have a lot of tree cover. According to the Arbor Day Foundation and the US Department of Agriculture, in one year, a mature tree will absorb more than 48 pounds of carbon dioxide. Trees and their root systems also contain runoff and control erosion vital where we live owing to the hills and flooding issues we are already facing in Greenbrier. My yard alone is home to 70 trees and consumes more than 1,000 pounds of carbon per year. It can take 50 or 75 years to grow trees of mature size. This is a resource that we cannot easily replace once it is destroyed. And with the crisis we are currently facing, we do not have the time to learn from this mistake.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Kaki Brooks, followed by Mark Whittle. Kaki, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, Kaki.
Thank you. I'm Kaki Brooks and I've lived in Charlottesville for 35 years. Throughout this process, we've heard much about how density promotes social equity. And we've also heard a lot about how much council and the planning commission care about Charlottesville's black community. But according to a recent report in the Daily Progress, over the past 10 years, council has allowed the density of the historically black Tenth and Page neighborhood to nearly double, greenlighting huge apartment projects such as the flats at West Village, the Standard and the Lark on Main. The result is shown by the 2020 census data has been black residents flight from Charlottesville's historically black neighborhoods and a steady rise in housing prices. Given these outcomes, why are you pushing to do the same thing throughout the entire city? And given the urgency of the affordable housing crisis council, why didn't you ensure that some of these posh new apartments were guaranteed at affordable rates for residents in need of housing? Given the justified outrage over the historic use of restrictive covenants and redlining to deny black citizens the opportunity to build wealth through property ownership, why have you considered encircling Charlottesville's historically black neighborhoods within what is essentially a giant restrictive covenant that prevents development and will once again deny black citizens the opportunity to build wealth? Is it because you know that developers may well force them out of their neighborhoods by bidding up property prices and then building non-affordable housing? It seems ironic that the plan you're proposing may result in the city council once again enacting a restrictive covenant that will deny black residents the ability to build wealth. Finally, a highly regarded UVA urban planner recently noted that the most likely income outcome of your plan is that homeowners property values will go up because you've allowed a new class of wealthy buyers, i.e. developers, to bid up home values. So wealthier folks will be okay. Their neighborhoods might look like Northern Virginia, but they can stick around and pay their taxes. However, poor people are forced out and Charlottesville's historic black neighborhoods are destroyed. Counselors and commissioners, is this a risk you're willing to take? I don't get your logic. Your agenda has a socialist tinge to it, but your strategy is strictly capitalistic. Let the market take care of things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Whittle. After that, we have Chris Shopper. Mark, you're on with the planning commission. We may have lost Mark, or maybe I pressed the wrong button. Maybe I can get him back. Mr. Whittle, if you could raise your hand again, we'll get you back. But for now, we'll go to Chris Shopper. Chris, you're on with the planning commission.
Hey, everyone. Hey, Chris. I'm going to start off by saying I'm a renter. So the opinions that you'll hear are going to be very different from those you've heard for the past several hours. There's been a lot of talk about what we need to do about affordable housing. And I think even the homeowners on the call have acknowledged that housing affordability is an issue. But those very same homeowners don't have to deal with the fact that each year their rent goes up $100 or each year they're competing with others in the community to find the few available spots that are cheap to live. So the concerns and considerations are very different when you're a homeowner and you have the luxury of being able to see your property values appreciated each year. And to count on the constraints on supply to continue to, to build things higher. I see a lot of vilification of the apartment complexes on West Main as symptoms of gentrification, but I don't think we talk enough about the people that move into historically black neighborhoods, the people that quickly put up a white picket fence and remodel the home and that don't interact with community members. I was looking on Street View earlier today to look at what West Main Street looked like in 2010. The golden era as some of the members of the community were espousing. It was a series of parking lots. It was a series of car, car shops. It was a series of undeveloped lots. It frankly was nothing to write home about. And it's really frustrating when people talk about, oh, there are vacant lots in the city that we can use to develop. Well, that was West Main Street 10 years ago, and we've already reached a point where the simple presence of apartment complexes is infuriating enough that people feel like their entire identity and the identity of the city is threatened. On the focus on climate, I know a couple of commenters noted that this could have a negative impact on climate. What's not considered is the fact that when we push people out to development in Green County, in Albemarle County, in Nelson County, those people are driving, the developments they live in are, are one housing predominantly. And the amount of trees that get knocked down, it's probably 70. It might even be even more per unit. So framing urban infill as an ineffective tool for carbon emissions, I, I just don't see that. And recently UC Berkeley came out with a study indicating that urban infill is actually one of the best solutions to reduce carbon emissions. I guess to end off, I want to say that I hope we can move back in the direction that the first future land use map was going. I feel like we've taken a step back, but I did want to acknowledge all of the, all of the people that have been working on this. I know you guys have received a lot of comments. I just want to make sure that you guys continue to consider renters, which constitute a majority of people, maybe not a majority of voices.
Thank you very much.
And Chair, I'm going to try to reconnect with Mr. Whittle, as I know he was waiting patiently. And Mr. Whittle,
I think, I think you got me. Thank you so much, Mr. Whittle, for hanging in there with me. Thank you. So I'm a teacher and I've lived in Charlottesville for about 35 years, I think. And I would like to return to the point made by Don Marin earlier, and that was concerning the contrast between the RHI consultants. the RHI consultant's million dollar comprehensive plan created for Charlottesville and its own two thousand and seventeen similar million dollar plan, comprehensive plan for Sandy Springs in Georgia. The contrast is truly breathtaking, and it's astonishing to me that the city council has accepted something so clearly inferior. Don did a nice job of summarizing the quality of the Sandy Springs Plan, how it contained for traffic flow studies and assessment of housing needs and census data showing projected population growth, environmental and economic data, visualizations of what the growth would look like, and finally, a detailed breakdown of the price and source of funding for every recommendation. Every neighborhood in Sandy Springs contributed to and signed off on the plan, and the plan's first of ten clear goals was the preservation of its existing neighborhoods. Sandy Springs earned gold status and a green community as a green community, and RHI won an excellence in planning award from the state of Georgia. By contrast, RHI's comprehensive plan for Charlottesville provided no data, no studies, no statistics, no projections, and as noted by the New York Times, minimal community involvement. Charlottesville's comprehensive plan didn't contain a single graph or chart, not even a single picture. It had a single primary goal, equity. Why didn't we get what Sandy Springs got? To RHI, I ask, do you think a plan developed on no facts or data represents the best practices you say you're striving for? And to city council, why didn't you ask for the detailed data you needed to make the best possible plans? The simple narrative nature of the Charlottesville comprehensive plan is a stark contrast to the Sandy Springs data-driven plan and lacks all the parts necessary to judge its strengths or weaknesses. How is it possible that RHI generated two such radically different plans? Were they instructed to do so? And if so, by whom and with what purpose? Looking at these two plans, I am utterly perplexed as to how they both classify as a city comprehensive plan, how the contrast arose, and why city council was willing to accept it without demanding similar quality for similar cost. Going forward with this narrative plan, when we could have a detailed data-driven plan along the lines of the Sandy Springs Plan, is an extraordinary lost opportunity to do things right, and it seems irresponsible, to say the least. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next up, we have Nancy Summers, followed by Tim Giles. Nancy, you're on with the Planning Commission.
Hello. It's getting late, isn't it? Well, the first thing I wanted to say is that in listening to everyone, I believe that we must concentrate on affordability as a thing in itself. Now, I've listened. I know that affordability is a huge issue all over the nation, actually, all over the world. Housing prices have risen. And so I think trying to manage affordability through the transformation of the city is going to be really problematic. I'd go at it directly and build affordable housing because indirect method is going to be very problematic and have unintended consequences. We use the word density all the time, but we never mentioned the density means an enormous amount of population growth, and population growth brings with it its own problems. And I had, I thought a lot about and it thinks that if you don't think about, you know, affordability as a thing in itself, and you're essentially counting, and I think Jody Lohandro called it a kind of trickle-down housing plan. We're going to build high-priced houses and apartments in hope it somehow helps poor people. But let's talk about the plan. First, we should note that council's record in ensuring that developers include affordable housing in their project has not been good. That they're always getting outsmarted by developers. But let's say things go a little differently, and a council is able to hold, you know, the developers to maybe say bringing ten percent or twenty percent of affordable housing. I've heard that you want to create in the next ten year four thousand units of affordable housing. That's a lot. And if you do it at ten percent of the units that people build, you know, when they build big apartments, you're going to need to build forty thousand units or have a hundred thousand more people in the country in our in our city, in our small ten point four square mile city. I was a geography teacher. So I think about square mileage. And if you had twenty percent affordable housing in these apartments, you'd have fifty thousand more people in the city. That's a lot of people. That requires a whole lot of infrastructure. That's going to, if you have, and I don't know how it creates equity. What would you do when, what do you, and you also have to realize this would totally transform our city. Now, why would you do this? I know that one of the leading affordable housing experts in the country, this Philip Cash, told you that doing this, increasing the population of Charlottesville so dramatically would, as in his own words, say, create Charlottesville, which would no longer be, quote, it would stop being a nice place to live. That's a direct quote from Philip Cash. And I don't know how it would create equity. Think about the education changes you'll have to have with fifty thousand more people. Think about the roads, the water supplies, all the services. This is quite a change. You can't have density without population growth. Take it from a geography teacher.
Thank you very much.
And next up, we have Tim Giles, followed by Dick Gibson. Tim, you're on with the Planning Commission. You have three minutes.
Check. Yeah, everyone here. Sounds good. My name is Tim Giles. I'm a renter in this community, so my opinions and my thoughts are a lot different than everyone else tonight as well. But I wanted to comment specifically on the future use land map. I think that cutting down the general residential story from three point five to two is going to create issues in the long run. We're going to have houses that can't even be built in existing R1 neighborhoods, which we need more housing. Well, if we can't build housing, they can't be affordable. Well, then we're just exacerbating our crisis now. Something that I would like to see restored, additionally, allowing the four-unit dwellings. We need to build more housing. How do we build more housing? We allow more housing. And additionally, if we use four units, well, then all of a sudden, we can use fair housing act requirements for accessibility on ground floor. As we get older, as things change, we we get disabled. We lose our faculties and our abilities by building more housing that accommodates more people in the long run. We can continue to create a Charlottesville that is livable and equitable and creates a more, for lack of a better word, lively living space. Additionally, we only have so much land in the city. We can't annex out. We can't go out, and so we should do better with the land we have. We should have more attached housing, townhouses, row houses, cottage, the missing middle. We need to have more of that so that we have the ability to create more wealth ownership to allow other people to generate their wealth, to build housing at different price points so that people of all incomes and all faculties have a place in Charlottesville and can contribute to its character in the long run. Additionally, something is we need to, we need to increase general density, and we need to take more advantage of mixed use than small commercial uses in neighborhoods. If we want things to be walkable and bikeable, well, then we need to incentivize the people that live in those areas to not be dependent on their cars. We want to cut down emissions. We want to cut down traffic. We need to give people the ability to use other modes of transportation to get the things that they need so they can live in the city that they want to live in. I think the current drafts of the map is a step back, especially in relation to some of the more, I guess, affluent owners and where some of the medium density was downgraded to general density. We're just going to continue doing exclusionary zoning. I think that is not the step that we want to take. And I, but as I wrap up, I want to thank Commission for working through all this. As we've heard from comments tonight, this is not a simple task. This is not something that is easily done. And patience and empathy will go a long way to making sure that the place we live continues to be a place that people want to grow in and have their families here and to continue to keep the Charlottesville character that it is. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, too.
And next up, we have Dick Gibson, followed by David Ram. Dick, you're on with the Planning Commission. You have three minutes.
Welcome, Dick.
Good evening. I'm unmuted.
You are.
All for taking the opportunity here from so many people. I agree with most of the comments that have been made this evening. I especially agree with the comments regarding the need for affordable housing in Charlottesville or more affordable housing in Charlottesville. I have personally been involved with two affordable housing projects, one in the city of Charlottesville and one in a joining county. And these were through a nonprofit, and I can tell you they are very difficult projects to make economical. Being a nonprofit, we were able to get grants and favorable loans to and rent subsidies in order to make them affordable. But there's no profit in them. So a developer is not going to come and you know, tear down a couple of houses and build an affordable housing complex. So that's something that I think is pretty self-evident, but I can tell you that from personal experience. I'd like to comment briefly on the comments that were made that a house is a house regardless of what's inside. A house, you know, is a house on the outside, but you must look beyond the inside to the outside. And when you see the fact that, you know, if you have twelve dwelling units in a unit that looks like a house, you're going to have more traffic. You're going to have twelve times as much as you would in an R1, traffic noise, parking, vehicle trips per day, trash cans, deliveries, et cetera. So you need to look on the streets in front of the house that's a house before you can make that judgment. And finally, I live on Grove Road and Grove Road, the lots on Grove Road are subject to deeded restrictive covenants that limit the development to R1. And the deeded restrictive covenants take priority over any attempt by the city to change the zoning in order to upzone. And I think that's been confirmed by the city attorney. I pointed that out to the consultant, and I find no mention of that in the consultant's updated report. So that's something that I would like for some comment and perhaps some action on because it puts people in a sort of a position of jeopardy, you know, having city council come out and say, well, we're going to upzone you to medium intensity when the fact of the matter is that there are deed restrictions that can't be overcome by city council. And it's created quite a bit of anxiety among people in my neighborhood who you know, say, well, I bought my house, you know, is R1. I bought my house in nineteen seventy six to raise our family is R1. And then, you know, have city come along and say, well, you know, actually, that's going to change, and you're going to be surrounded by, you know, three to four and a half story dwellings with twelve dwelling units in it. So I think that needs to be addressed to sort of put people's mind at ease and let them know that, no, this is not going to affect you because your deed restriction takes priority. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dick. Appreciate that.
Next up, we have David Ram, followed by Diane Dale. David, you're on with the Planning Commission.
Hard to unmute, and I think I succeeded in unmuting. I hope I did.
You did. You're good.
Excellent. Thank you. So thank you, the committee. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak and for all your hard work. And also the presentation, which I truly learned things, and I'm grateful for that. You know, I can't help but say, like, also, congratulations, everybody on screen for your poker faces. I would not have been able to do that, but but good job to all of you. Well, not you, Lyle. Sorry. Just take that back. And but I but I also want to come out. So I'm relatively new resident of Charlottesville. I know that causes like oaky fingers for some people, but I am. I'm a relatively new resident. It just happens. And I'm somebody, I live right near Rugby Avenue. I'm probably, you know, I'm the person who's really disappointed that we lost the mixed use part of Rugby Avenue. But that's partially just now, you know, I just want you to know this opinion's out there. Like, I love density. I love variety. I love apartments, townhouses. I love them next to each other. I've lived in those neighborhoods over different places, and results are dynamic neighborhoods full of people. And the great thing about people is they're people, and they bring variety and options in a whole world. And Charlottesville, I think, could stand that. I think we could see more people, more variety, more life. Obviously, affordability is a very critical point. From what I understand of it, and I'm not a zoning expert, I think the affordable housing overlay makes sense, and I would urge that that be considered more. But I also have to say the discussion in general, I've been pretty frustrated. And the one thing, and I can't believe I'm going to waste my time saying this, but like, the conflation of the comprehensive plan, the completed comprehensive plan for Sandy Springs with a land use map for Charlottesville is really just a weird thing. This is part of the comprehensive plan. It is an ingredient. It is not the whole thing. Also, just one little thing, since it was repeated really quickly, that the the population growth for Charlottesville is not one percent. If you look at the actual data, there's a lot of different numbers, and it's also about forty percent for the other Sandy Springs. Anyway, the number of dishonest arguments against the plan is one of the best arguments for it, because I feel like if that's the sort of thing we're hearing is dishonest arguments, then what we've got, then the plan is mostly working because the reality is not a critique of the plan, but a critique of a kind of imagined version, the bugaboo version. And I think there are reasonable criticisms of the plan. I hope you hear them. I hope you proceed. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you so much, David.
And next up, we have Diane Dale, followed by Josh Crenn.
Diane.
You're on.
Good evening, Diane.
Thank you. I share concern about how divisive this process has been, as evidenced by this presentation discussion that's been going on with the public. I think that one of the things that what's now becoming known as the hack plan does is it treats the issues as a citywide problem. The plan has addressed historical land use wrongs that that has really left people feeling like they that that there's winners and losers. There's there's areas that are being chosen to be altered or protected, and it's been very divisive, clearly. What the hack plan does is is in effect recognize that there's wrongs across the city, be them economic, educational, healthcare, land use, social norms. It was a citywide problem, and what the hack plan does is address the city as a whole. And there's an opportunity to be unifying rather than divisive, and I think that that's a really important aspect of that approach and looking at the overlay district that hasn't been addressed. What we're looking at right now continues to divide this community, and it's really unfortunate. Second, in terms of who knows who's been aware of what's going on and not. I'm a member of the Steering Committee for the Comp Plan. I'm also a member of the Neighborhood Board and for Martha Jefferson. And so my neighborhood knows what's going on because I've kept them involved. But I think that the, in a conversation with Alex, he had told me that the consultants had done a really extraordinary job of reaching out to the traditionally underserved neighborhoods. And you've gotten a lot of impact input, and I think the the input is reflected in a lot of concerns about affordability and housing. I think that the structure of neighborhood associations has really fallen apart with the pandemic. And if you live in a neighborhood with a neighborhood board that's paying attention, you know what's going on. But a lot of neighborhoods that have been speaking, we had no idea. They're saying they genuinely have no idea what's going on because the neighborhood board, unless you had a really good board, there was no communication because I don't know that the consultants and the and the person in charge of outreach reached out to the boards, to the neighborhood boards. I know I was never reached, was contacted as a member of the board. I was contacted as a member of the steering community. So I think that when the planning commission says, wait, we've done a great job of communicating, you did to certain aspects of this areas of the city, but there are neighborhoods in the city that really got left out. And that's that's just because of the pandemic and also the the structure, the structure that Dr. Richardson had set up for the neighborhood leaders that stopped happening as soon as the pandemic happened. And of course, he left as well. So I think you need to be aware that some communication channels that may traditionally have been in place did not work. I would like to just say that with regard to I would like to just say that with regard to, I think that the process has been going on long enough that it's reasonable to expect the consultants to present materials that are context specific, showing us the missing middle, examples of zoning diagrams that have dimensions and sizes that are not relevant to Charlottesville. Pictures of good development with wide streets, et cetera, does not build trust and confidence and understanding in the community. And so I think that a lot of the opposition is, is, is because of the communication. I've got about 10 more points, but I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Diane. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have Josh Kran, followed by Oliver Platts Mills. Josh, you're on with the planning commission.
Hello, Josh.
Hi, my name's Josh. I live on North Avenue in Locust Grove and I hope I can make a couple of clear points. Before the meeting, I was gonna, I was planning to focus on mixed use and that was going to be like my thing, but now hearing so many comments coming in just fiercely negative about density and upzoning and destroying neighborhoods. I think I, I feel like I need to take a little bit of a different tack. So forgive me if this is rambling a little bit, but um. So we're hearing a lot of folks saying that density as a rule is undesirable. Even, even people who support density and want to focus it in certain areas, historically exclusionary neighborhoods, for example, which I totally support, by the way, that even these folks kind of frame it as, as it's a sacrifice, a sacrifice that's worth making in the name of equity and affordability, but still not something that's good on its own. And I just disagree with that. Like, I, he could, he could, some of my argument as density is good, actually. Like, and not just citywide, but in my backyard, right? Like, I want more density in my backyard. I want more neighbors. I want more diverse neighbors. More neighbors is more fun. I want places that I can walk to within my neighborhood. Locust Grove is a food desert. It's basically like if you, if you came to my house, you'd see the sidewalks and both sides of the street and the trees. And you think, oh, this is a walkable place. But if you live here, you realize that it's totally not the case. It's a completely unwalkable place because there's no place within, there's no retail amenities within easy walking distance. So everybody takes their cars to run their errands. You basically have to drive everywhere you go. And yeah, so I guess I'm kind of coming back to the walkability and mixed use piece. And I think walkability might be a key, or one key to unlock the like divisiveness. Because I think a lot of people, when they think about density, they imagine like the same kind of car centric, people hostile planning just with more people and bigger buildings. But if people experienced like a truly walkable community that wasn't jammed up with cars and parking garages that you have to somehow walk past to get where you're going. I don't know if they would love it, but they might see that it's not the kind of hellscape that they're afraid of. So I'm out of time. Thank you all for the work that you've done. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Next, we have Oliver Platts Mills, followed by Will Embry Moore. Oliver, you're on with the planning commission.
Greens, Oliver. And you go, you unmute that mic. You need to unmute your mic, Oliver.
Sorry, my computer completely froze as soon as I was, as soon as it happened. Okay. Thank you all for your efforts. I believe that our consultants and the planning commission have really done an excellent job here engaging the citizens, especially considering our ongoing pandemic. That being said, I really hope that they continue to engage citizens who have yet to enter the process. And it's clear listening that, that, that there's too many people who have been, who are in the dark. But I would echo the comment of the Chair Mitchell, who that prolonging this process risks deepening the housing crisis as investors and developers wait to see what the city will decide, and our lack of significant housing creation fails to meet climbing demand. I'd like to add my voice broadly to those calling for a modest increase in density throughout the entire city. Allowing a variety of housing types in our neighborhoods will help share the burden, but mostly the rewards of welcoming new residents into our city. I live in Fifeville. We have a number of multifamily housing types here, and I've met wonderful neighbors in all types, some who rent and others who own. I would also like to explicitly comment on a specific portion of the map where I believe the current designation is misplaced. I would call listeners' attention to the largely vacant land adjacent to Roosevelt Brown Boulevard between the Cherry Avenue intersection, the railroad underpass. This area is immediately adjacent to UVA's Health System, which is the largest employer in our area. While traffic is a problem in the Fifeville neighborhood where I live, it is largely driven by employees of UVA Health System and Main Street Businesses commuting from outside of our community where they can afford to live. Currently, the zoning for this area, which is part of the larger Cherry Avenue corridor, has been given the same zoning that on the map, a light pink, which is being used to introduce mixed use or urban form into our single family neighborhoods. I struggle to see how our consultants will manage in a zoning rewrite to, to hold the land adjacent to Belmark Park the same as land adjacent to the University of Virginia Hospital. The land there is, is, it's physically lower than the hospital and dwarfed by the hospital and, and large buildings would fit. And yet I don't see any conversation about this. I think largely because the air is being sucked out of the room by our back and forth between landowners and homeowners in neighborhoods. I think that it's important that this process considers to take the needs of renters and center them as where we are 50% renters and probably will grow as that demand grows with the University of Virginia's growth. Thank you for what you're doing. Good night.
Yeah, there's value in that point. Look at this. But Eric, next.
Next, we have David Singerman, followed by Laura Byazon. David, you're on.
How you doing?
Hi, can you all hear me? Yeah. So first, I want to thank the everybody on this call for being up this late, and especially the planning commissioners and the designers and the counselors. I was glad that Crystal Passmore got to speak a couple of hours ago because it meant that I wasn't the only person on this call trying to feed dinner to my toddler while I was also trying to attend this meeting. And I think that there's, I don't want to judge too much, but I think that there's probably no coincidence that the voices on the call have gotten younger as the evening has gone on because it's past kids bedtime and now people can contribute. And that to me echoes Crystal's point about who is, whose voices are being heard on this call and who are not. In addition to the point about almost everyone speaking on this call having been a property owner, whereas the city is, you know, has plenty of renters in it. But I, I don't mean to use my kid as a prop, but having, you know, a two year old sort of changes the way that you, you look at things. And I'm a homeowner in, in Frye Spring, have been for a couple of years and have lived here for a few years longer. And I would just encourage everybody on this call who has, at this meeting, who has children to think about what they like about Charlottesville and where they would like their kids to be able to live. Because if, if you have kids and you would like them to be able to live in Charlottesville too, we are going to need to build a lot more housing. I agree with the people who have just spoken and said that they like density, that they like having more neighbors, that they like having more diverse neighbors. I'm fortunate enough to live in a corner of Frye Spring where there are a couple of grandfather duplexes around the corner, and that really livens up the neighborhood and make things a lot more interesting. And so, yeah, if you, if you like, if you have moved to Charlottesville and you live in Charlottesville because you think it's a great place to live, and you would like other people to experience it as a great place to live, then I think you need to support a version of this plan that increases density across the city and allows alter to people who want to live here to be able to move here. So I would encourage the planning commission to listen to what livable Charlottesville had to say in its letter over the last couple of days and to go back to the version of the plan from earlier in the summer, which, which I was a big fan of. Thanks a lot.
And thank you very much. Who's next?
Next, we have Laura Byazon, followed by Michael Salvatiera. Laura, you're on with the planning commission.
Laura, how you doing, Laura?
Hi there. I'm good. Thank you. I've spoken here before about my family's home towards the end of Amherst Street, being less than 20 feet away from a high intensity zone with no tree line separating them. Five other homes on my street also border this zone, but many of us missed the public comment period, much like a previous speaker spoke about. Mr. Solia Yates told me that my comment would be officially included with the others and that he walked by and saw what I meant, but I was disappointed to see that nothing changed with the new map. Is there a rationale for this? I've made it clear that we are not the NIMBYs in the urban dictionary sense, but in the literal sense. What protections will we have? Will a developer be able to build a five story apartment complex and parking lots? Like literally right next to where my twin two year olds, two year olds who are playing. We were cautious when buying our house to look at the zoning around us, and we never imagined that this would happen. I've also expressed my frustration at the framing of this initiative around race because we are a minority family and our house stands to be one of the homes most severely impacted. I again ask to please reconsider that high density strip behind, at the very end of Amherst behind the, towards the very end of Amherst. And please make that a middle intensity. I think that will fit our area better. Of course, we welcome people from all walks of life to be our neighbors, but obviously we don't want a dairy market sized building zones literally in our backyard. Neither would any of you. And I was also disappointed to see that the middle intensity being scaled back, that it seemed like middle intensity was being scaled back in the wealthiest of neighborhoods in this most current map. And it's just upsetting because my street is a middle, is my street is a middle class diverse street. And our comments about high being next to low really seem to just be ignored by the commission, and it's very stressful for our family and disappointing. So thank you for, for your time.
Great input, Laura. Thank you very much. Mr. Rice.
Next, we have Michael Salvatiera, followed by Mark Rylander. Michael, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Michael Salvatiera. I live on Welford Street, which is within one of the neighborhoods that stands to see the most change. And I am, from what I understand, from which has come a lot of the opposition to the zoning changes. And I just wanted to add my voice as a resident and a homeowner the last 12 years that I am very much in favor of the zoning changes on land map, and I support increased density. I support multi unit housing. I do think it needs to be, to be, to truly include affordable housing in it. And I believe we all benefit from having a variety of types of housing and from density. And I, I very much agree with the previous comments that noted that many of the people who oppose zoning changes are not the people trying to find affordable housing. And I think the arguments that you've heard some of tonight that about quote neighborhood character are based in the same kind of thinking that got us the unjust exclusionary housing laws that have shaped so much of our city throughout its history. And I think if we want to repair that injustice, one way is to make more of our city accessible and affordable for everyone. I think the status quo, which every neighborhood becomes more and more expensive and we push people out, development sprawls away from the city is worse for people, for jobs, makes it more difficult for people to work in the community in which they live. Worse for the environment, for traffic, as people noted before, traffic. That's where we get traffic from, from sprawl, not from density. And it just furthers inequality in our community. So any changes to the quote unquote neighborhood character are more than worth it if it creates a more just and inclusive housing policy. From hearing the members of the commission speak, the housing overlay zone sounds like promising possibility too. I'd love to hear more about that. So again, I'm, I'm in favor of zoning changes in the future land use map. And I actually prefer the the previous proposal from earlier in the summer, which had more substantial changes. Particularly in the most historically exclusionary neighborhoods, my own neighborhood included. And I agree with those who have advocated for putting teeth on the policies that actually require significantly more affordable units. Thank you.
Michael, thank you very much.
And next up, we have Mark Rylander, followed by Ethan Tate. Mark, you're on with the planning commission.
All right, welcome. All right. Thank you. Thanks for all you do. There've been some excellent points by, by a lot of commissioners tonight and members of the public. One of the things that I've been kind of disappointed and curious about, however, is the sort of lack of illustration at the, at the sort of neighborhood block and lot level of what we're talking about when we look at the land use map. It's, it seems like a real disconnect to go from the kind of aspirational goals of the comp plan, and then suddenly the map appears and you know, we all have this sense of deja vu because it is happening all over again, that leap that gets made. And when I talk to friends and neighbors about what, what is, what the plan actually means, I can't use any of my skills because I can't really tell what it means in terms of number of units as, as, as Mr. Solia Yates said tonight, you know, on one hand, you know, a house that has three units in it that hasn't changed is, is exactly the same as a single family house. And that's one thing. But then if it's 12 units on a lot, what does that actually look like? So I would like to see more relevant images to Charlottesville and certainly plans and diagrams that show if we're going to increase density, what is it actually going to look like? You know, I've been concerned to see a lot of, a lot of images from, from Washington and a lot of sort of the canon of new urbanism and the missing, missing middle picture that seems to show up in every single conversation. The other thing that I think is, is important to keep in mind that I've heard a number of people refer to is just being aware of the, the limits of what we're actually able to accomplish through this process. And, you know, I know a little about a lot of things as an architect, but I know that affordable housing is really, really difficult to pull off. And anytime I've sat in on a, on a hack meeting, I realize what a kind of special breed affordable housing advocates and developers are in bringing together the funding and the resources. And I think that the plan that was done is, is really excellent. So this conversation about increasing our affordable housing is a very specific and very technical kind of thing. And it's, it's not going to be solved by private sector development. And I think many of you agree, and Jody said earlier, you know, density is not going to just provide it. So you know, I think there's a lot of work that has to be done on that, on that piece to really make it happen at the granular level, at the project by project level. And I look forward to the city really digging in and making that happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Ethan Tate, followed by Bill Emery. Ethan, you're on with the planning commission.
Ethan.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm a longtime listener and a first time caller. Charlottesville has been my home for my whole adult life. For 13 years, I was a renter of mostly basement apartments in north downtown. Now I live in a small house in Martha Jefferson neighborhood. I'm on the Martha Jefferson Neighborhood Association Board. But my comments reflect the collective thoughts of myself and my spouse, and I believe our two year old who is riveted by all of this. First, I'd like to thank everyone on the planning commission who is putting so much care. First, I'd like to thank everyone on the Planning Commission who is putting so much care and time into this. I sincerely appreciate your service to our city. I also appreciate the time that you've given us as a community to get this right over the last several years. I want to talk briefly about two things tonight, traffic and neighborhood character. First, traffic. This chapter of the comprehensive plan and the future land use map are tools that help us reduce our community's reliance on private vehicles for aspects of daily life. I really urge you to keep pushing on this opportunity in all contexts, but particularly the number of vehicle trips in our neighborhoods that could be eliminated every morning and every afternoon. If we invested in the walking and biking infrastructure that families need to safely get to our schools without risking life and limb. Additionally, I'd like to see more multifamily homes allowed, especially within a certain radius of all public schools in the city. I don't think the latest draft promotes this density opportunity enough to meet our stated climate goals. We must allow more families to live in the city and go about their days with less driving. This density fueled walkability promotes an active lifestyle from an early age. And as others have said, also allows for more connection to diversity of all kinds in our neighborhoods. Those multifamily houses will be within financial reach for more families, even the extremely low-income families in our city. If we are smart in how we implement the affordable housing plan and the potential affordability overlay. Ecologically, our future has to be denser. It just has to be. Finally, I'd like to talk about neighborhood character. The neighborhood character I care about is how welcoming are people? How comfortable are neighbors offering and asking each other for help? Do we celebrate progress or do we shun it? Do we know each other's names? Do we tackle community problems? Or do we assign blame to different people? Do we act like a community? Are we a bunch of little forts with only a common zip code? To me, neighborhood character isn't about paint colors on shutters or window trim whip, or even front yard landscaping, as nice as all of that can be. I generally agree with Mr. Soli Yates on aesthetics, but neighborhood, neighborhood character for me is about the character of the neighbors, the people. It's the community that we want to create. I, I just ask you, especially planning commissioners and city councilors, please remember that you're planning for a better future. Please keep pushing for what my two-year-old and all of her future classmates at Burley Moran Elementary will need in the Liverpool city, particularly her future classmates who aren't born with her privilege. Center those families' voices, not just the loud ones. We're able to take four and a half hours on a call tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next we have Bill Emery followed by Jamel Bowie. Bill, you're on.
Bill, welcome. Good to hear from you.
So I really am here this time. Oh, life is like a country song. My two-year-olds are 39 next month. But tonight my dog is in the hospital and my car is broke down. And my bona fides, I live next door to 180 affordable units, Timberlake Place and Carlton Views, and I live in a broke down house. For the past 11 months, I've asked zoning, planning and land use people for a map of the existing affordable housing in Charlottesville. I've asked for the numbers of affordable dwelling units needed per neighborhood to meet our agreed upon goals. These maps and numbers aren't available to me or to the planning commission. How can we do our job without this information? In my communication in 2011 or 2021, I've restated the Willen Mills Neighborhood's 1988 request for a small area plan. Bad zoning code designed by Harland Bartholomew and Associates was forced on my blue collar neighborhood at the time of its annexation in 1963. Sweeping large envelope changes were laid down. People's yards were split zone for manufacturing adjacent to residential. You know, the only thing that Harland Bartholomew did bad wasn't exclusionary zoning. Since 1963, we've been asking for a cure, talking to our elected councilors, talking to the planning commission, talking to the neighborhood development staff. Over the intervening three score years, by means of multiple land use maps and code rewrites, we've taken small steps securing minor favorable amendments to benefit the cohesion of our fragile neighborhood. But the extensive Harland Bartholomew zoning is still in place. The Harland Bartholomew area is teed up in the proposed land use plan to be expanded and renamed as a neighborhood mixed-use node and business and technology mixed-use corridor. I do not want power brokers or pressure groups writing our zoning code. I do not want to play follow the municipal leader and tag along behind Portland and Minneapolis. All Charlottesville's neighborhoods are sensitive. Zoning is best done with the population, not to the population. Don't drop zoning like a bomb from 50,000 feet. Don't experiment with our futures. Don't do wholesale code revision. We continue to ask for thoughtful, careful, fine-grained database. Oops, let's see. It must be another line. Insightful, responsive neighborhood planning. Please deliver that and thanks for your hard work.
I have to admit that I did not know who Mr. Bartholomew was until I chatted with you about you. So thank you for that. Anyway, next.
Next is Jamel Bowie followed by Nicole Scro. Jamel, you're on with the Planning Commission.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, great. My original plan was to say a few things about the draft FLUM map right now, but many of those comments have already been set up. Just like to express my support for the May revision that had more substantial changes to density across the city. And I'd like to express my support for greater density in historically exclusionary neighborhoods, as well as neighborhoods across the city. I live in the Ridge Street neighborhood. I live next to a number of multifamily units. It has been a real pleasure to be in a neighborhood with those sorts of mixed housing forms. My previous neighborhood down Carlton Avenue was similarly mixed in its housing forms. And I thought that was a real pleasure. But instead of going on about that, I just think I want to make two general points. The first is that I sometimes think that members of our community who are securely housed, who have homes that they likely own, who can rely on the, the value that's appreciated in their homes, don't fully appreciate how dire the housing situation has become for many community members, both low income and middle income, who don't have the opportunities or the income or the wealth to be able to purchase a single-family home. I'm thinking of teachers. I'm thinking of restaurant workers. I'm thinking of nurses. I'm thinking of the people who make Charlottesville work, who do the work. And I think they should have a place in this city. The second point I'd like to make is I think somewhat along the same lines, there's not enough attention paid to the ways in which the status quo is already exacerbating the problems that some, some speakers have said they are worried about teardowns, gentrification. These are things already happening. Duplexes are already being bought and turned into single-family homes. Many such changes are already happening. Luxury housing is being produced, but it's again, single-family homes at unattainable prices. I, I happen to be someone who has been quite fortunate in my career. And even for myself and my, my wife, it was a struggle to find a place to, to live in Charlottesville. So not to run too long, tho- those I think are two things I think should be, we should remind ourselves of. Thank you to the commissioners. Thank you to the consultants for the work. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And next we have Nicole Scro followed by Josh Karp. Nicole, you're on with the Planning Commission.
Nicole, welcome.
Hey, can you hear me?
You can.
Awesome. Okay. I'm Nicole Scro. I'm a land use attorney. I, I've sat in your meetings back in 2016 as a young associate, doing some zoning work here in Charlottesville. So I appreciate it's kind of cool being at this point and following it all the way through. Since, since that first time I've, I've gone out and started doing some of my own development. So I've got, you know, a cottage courtyard with 20% affordability and another project with a third affordability. Of course, these are small projects, so there's 25 units and six units. But got an application for fiveplexes and got some plaster in my hair from trying to convert a duplex. So this is near and dear to my heart. This is basically what I'm saying. So I've got some technical things I just kind of wanted to say. The first is about the change from three and a half stories to two and a half stories. Honestly, Crystal Pasmore said it really well. Heard the consultant say what we want is still possible. Of course, the extension of that sentence is, but this plan makes it harder. And I just want to kind of shed light on, yes, it does. It doesn't allow you to build a stacked triplex or a stacked triplex with an affordable unit in the basement, which would be a fourplex. Of course, that would be a little bit harder to do. And I know a lot of these details about what can be built will be bought out in the zoning rewrite, but it is certainly true that going from three and a half stories to two and a half stories is taking housing types and affordability levels off the table. Just another thing to highlight there is if I am limited going vertically, I have to go horizontally with my number of units. And to do that, I think my fire alarm is going off, so that's fun. But, but to do that, it's, it's good now. So that's, that's good. But anyway, if my vertical limitation is two and a half stories, I have to go more horizontally, which means that I might hit the horizontal disturbance and which might require me to do a V S M P plan, which would be more expensive and, and hamper my ability to do deeper affordability. So I just wanted to say these are real impacts. Multifamily is certainly limited by making this change. And the other thing I wanted to say quickly, I know it's very late and many, many hours have been put into this is the idea of it being intentional about affordability. I just, again, it is not, it is not a luxury housing apartment building versus a fiveplex or anything like that. It is a McMansion one-plex, you know, a single-family detached home versus a five-plex. So it's one person versus four people. Our status quo is right now, if we don't do anything embedded in redlining and, and you know, racial tents and limited housing affordability, I'm competing against the $700,000 homes. So that is what we have now. And so anything more than that is a good thing. It doesn't get to, it, it does not get to under 30% AMI and that is important to note. But it gets you to 100, 120 AMI versus 200, 250 and these things matter.
We're going to have to wrap up Nicole.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, definitely. Thanks for your time. I know it's late. Thank you for, for all you do. That's all. Thanks.
And next we have Josh Karp followed by Catherine Loughlin. Josh, you're on.
Josh, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Am I unmuted?
You are. We can hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you everyone still on the call. Your patience. So last time we were talking about the land use map, I felt really proud of this community. They were housing advocates of Click who wrote a petition asking that we protect disadvantaged neighborhoods and add density and affordable housing in historically exclusionary neighborhoods. And I was proud to sign that petition along with 500 other members of our community. So if you think this call is long, imagine all 500 people on my petition on this call tonight. Sounds fun to me. And since the last draft.
That's cool.
Since the last draft, groups like Click and DSA have been fighting hard at City Hall under a door for tenants' rights. This community cares a lot about affordable housing and that's why this draft is such a letdown. I can't fit it all in three minutes, but it fails to up to our values in many ways. The community asked for more density and more affordability in these affluent majority white neighborhoods. And what happened? The new draft cut down density in hundreds of parcels across town. Was it done to protect sensitive communities? It was not. And I'll tell you how you can tell. The new map decreased density in parcels that are disproportionately highly valued in neighborhoods that are disproportionately white and disproportionately wealthy. This is not being done to help low-income communities, which we should be doing absolutely. We asked the city to make it easier to build more affordable housing, like multiplexes and townhomes. And what happened? For no reason that's been, that's been stated, the new map cuts housing, cuts heights for 8,000 parcels across the city. It bans townhomes and stacked triplexes on those 8,000 parcels. Habitat and PHA know a few things about building affordable housing and both groups have said stacked townhomes are a critical tool for building lower-cost housing. We should make it easier to build, not harder. We've asked for, for more walkable communities. So people can walk to a grocery store and buy fresh food. And what happened? The new map guts mixed-use destinations across the city. So if you want fresh vegetables, I guess you dive in to get them. If you don't have a car, I don't know. Good luck. Our community has great values, but you're not going to find them in this map. This map reflects the preferences of a small minority of mostly wealthy, mostly white residents from the most expensive neighborhoods in town. Planning Commission, City Council, the community needs you to radically rework this map and bring it in line with the values of our, of the whole community, not just frankly, Lewis Mountain. We need you to bring back intensity in exclusionary neighborhoods. We need more mixed-use areas so anybody can walk to a grocery store. I mean, to Pride has affordable housing citywide everywhere, which means going back to three and a half stories and a number of residential and allowing townhomes everywhere. This map is disappointing, but the planning commission and council have the power to make it better if you choose to. I think, thanks for your time. I'll try and give you three seconds back.
Thank you and thank you for your comments very much.
And next we have Catherine Loughlin followed by Greg Weaver. Catherine, you're on.
Catherine. You're gonna need to unmute your mic. There you go.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, I'm a homeowner who lives off of Preston Avenue near Rugby. And I'm here speaking tonight in favor of increased density and echoing the disappointment that Josh Karp just spoke of in the, the current map. I particularly like to see increased density in the most historically exclusionary neighborhoods where a city covered in Black Lives Matter and all are welcome here signs. But our neighborhoods are the direct result of 100-year-old explicitly racist policies. Changing our current land use policies is critically needed to create racial equity. We know that increased density alone is not going to create enough affordable housing, but it is an essential piece of affordability. Despite the attitudes of many tonight, which have been shocking to me, there is clearly a genuine housing crisis. It affects many and it needs urgent action. Additionally, from a climate change perspective, we also need density. Urban infill is ecologically sound. Dense neighborhoods are walkable and bikeable. I particularly appreciate being able to walk a couple of blocks to buy basics like milk and bread and not have to get in my car and drive in order to, to get, get those kinds of things. Every time I do that, that's one car not on the road. Denser neighborhoods are just environmentally better and result in less traffic in addition to being more convenient. And as others have noted, we're hearing tonight from a very specific part of the Charlottesville community. Please recognize that and please don't listen to the voices asking you to slow down this process. It's already been very slow. We have to act urgently. The status quo is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine.
And next up we have Greg Weaver followed by Andrea Massey. Greg, you're on with the Planning Commission.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks. I'm Greg Weaver, 11th Friday, spring. Something that's disturbed me about many of the calls tonight is that climate change has been left out of the picture. Now granted, I wrote this a couple of hours ago and there's, I, so I thank you for those people who brought it up. So those anti-density callers that have mentioned, mentioned climate change, get the solution to climate incorrect. Yes, tree cover is important and needs to be taken into account. Our tree canopy needs to be strategically fortified. But solving climate change takes systemic change. We can't just halt development and hope that that halting takes care of the problem. We in Charlottesville need to transform the way we live based on the things that we do that actively harm the planet. That in mind, transportation is the number one source of greenhouse gas emissions in the country. As Charlottesville becomes more unaffordable, we push out the working class of the city further into the As Charlottesville becomes more unaffordable, we push out the working class of the city further into the county and beyond. Uh, we will continue to see a rise of single-family vehicles driving into the city as people go to work, therefore increasing emissions. Increased density in the construction of multifamily homes coupled with, one, increased mixed-use zoning, of which I think there should be much more of than in, in the current plan, and two, increased infrastructure proj- um, projects centered around pedestrian and cyclist traffic as well as mass transit expansion. Take the necessary steps to bring workers back into the city and reduce our carbon footprint. It's worth, um, it's worth cutting down trees to build multifamily housing um, and achieve this. Some callers think higher density means more cars and more traffic. It doesn't if infrastructure is transformed to eliminate the need for cars. I also want to counter, I, I anti-density callers ask, uh, ask to keep pushing these changes back so that we can talk uh, to more of the community. In the face of climate change, we simply don't have more time. These changes have already been years in the making. We need to get this done. Further, these callers are asking for extended time to consult more members of the community. They shouldn't conflate their neighbors, that is, home, homeowners of particular neighborhoods um, with the wider community of Charlottesville. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you very much.
And next up, we have Andrea Massey, followed by David Walsh. Andrea, you're on with the planning commission.
Andrea, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you um, again for all of your hard work over the last several years. As this is not a new issue, and there's been a lot of people working on this for a really, really long time. I'm asking that you keep front of mind that we need deeply affordable housing. We need to avoid further displacement of black residents and to consider the affordable housing overlay that allows medium-intensity byright and that provides exemptions from that for historically black neighborhoods. Also, I would like to um, ask that you keep working to ensure density will be dedicated to affordability. This process and outreach has been going on for years. It has been a long time coming, and I would ask that you vote on this without delay. It's hard listening um, to a lot of the callers saying that this is going too quickly and that UVA and the county are not involved. They are, as well as all the other tools to meet affordability. This is not being done in a vacuum. This is dot, being done, I know, with all of the other tools being looked at. But most upsetting is the talk about preserving the character of neighborhoods. Um, someone called it the happy yellow. Um, these are a product of deliberate racial segregation, and we absolutely have the responsibility to right that wrong. My views, I mean, listening to the council members, my views are really aligned, completely aligned with what Mayor Walker had to say. Um, Councilmember Snook continues to say that we should be making sure all housing needs are considered, including the higher wealth and medium wealth community members. Those needs will always be met. They always have. They always will. That's not what we're doing here. We have to put the voices of people other than those in front of mind so that their needs can be met and fulfilled. Thank you all so much for what you're doing.
Andrea, thank you very much.
Next up, we have David Walsh, followed by Michelle Rowan. David, you're on.
David, welcome.
Uh, all right. Oh, perfect. Okay, I'm unmuted. Um, so first of all, uh, let me just say, it, it's somewhat surreal for me to, I, I'm from Minneapolis and to hear Minneapolis being cited as, oh, this is such the horrible example of mixed-use development. Um, because, you know, I, I moved to Charlottesville um, last year. Um, and it always struck me that things that were the, the best part of Charlottesville, the, the density, the, the mixed-use developments uh, that do exist in this community are the most similar uh, parts of, you know, to, to Minneapolis. Um, so I, I really just wanted to second uh, some of the comments that have been made since, I mean, it's, it's been going on for some time now. Um, uh, that, one, I'm disappointed that um, the planning commission seems to have backed down um, from its initial plans uh, for uh, upzoning um, uh, from, from earlier in the summer. And two, um, as, as any other, what the hell is that? Okay, yeah, okay, yeah. Well, we have all sorts of problems going on in this. There's, there's a flood warning from the, from the hurricane, but, but this is actually a really important point because, as I was going to say, um, one of the, uh, I, I mean, if, if, to be totally blunt, um, there is a generational divide uh, in the comments tonight between, not just between renters and homeowners, but between younger people and older people, and the older people are sort of somewhat front-loaded at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and not to put too fine a point on it, but uh, you know, I'm, I'm in my early thirties. Um, my fiance and I, soon to be wife, um, are going to be here hopefully for quite some time in, in, in a way that, that is not necessarily the case with some of the older homeowners. And the number one issue that we are concerned about is climate change and what that means, not just for this community, but for the world in general. Um, and it is absolutely the case that uh, increasing density and moving away from car culture uh, in this country and globally um, is, is our number one priority. Um, and so uh, I, I, I really was impressed um, uh, when I uh, read the initial plan uh, for upzoning in this town. Um, I thought that it sounded very, it was a step in the right direction to, I think, what needs to be done, which is uh, uh, introducing a kind of development model uh, more along the lines of what's happening in Paris uh, in the past five or ten years, which I guess, and I, Lyle is not a yes, but, but, but trying to move away from, and we've already done this in this town already uh, to a certain extent, by the very virtue, nobody's mentioned this before, but we have a pedestrian mall in the center of Charlottesville, um, which has been a tremendous, I mean, tremendous success uh, in terms of uh, uh, bu- bu- both, 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 both bringing in uh, people who want to buy homes in this community and also uh, helping small businesses. Um, so I, I just, I, I really, really urge this planning commission um, to be mindful of the uh, kinds of people who are, who are, are participating in this conversation and, and the voices that are silenced, and, and I just, I, I think more zoning is better, and I will end there. Upzoning is better.
And so the mayor has just uh, texted us saying that, that, that noise was a tornado warning, so be aware that there's a tornado warning going on right now. Um.
Was it a warning or a watch? Because a warning means you should seek shelter immediately, says the Wisconsinite in me.
She said it was a warning.
Y'all. Better look into that. Uh, uh, like, sorry for the interruption.
Well, thank you. Um, I don't, I don't hear any radio.
Yeah, it said to take um, shelter and that it was in effect until eleven, yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Creasy, do you recommend that we suspend this and like, take shelter? Do you want to keep powering through?
Can we bring our laptops to our shelters?
I don't have a place to shelter, so I'll just power through.
Um, I mean, I, I don't know that we have much protocol for this. I, I feel that people should uh, should uh, take the the information that they've been provided and make a decision for themselves as to their current location.
Right, so if you feel a need to, to leave the meeting, it's all good. Uh, if you want to power through, let's power through.
Okay, and as Commissioner Stolzenberg pointed out, Michelle uh, Rowan did speak uh, earlier, and we will pass over her for now as we move on to our first-time speakers, uh, Sam Gulland, and then James Chang. Sam, you're on.
Chair Mitchell, could I interrupt just a second? The, the actual warning says that five minutes ago, a severe thunderstorm capable of producing a tornado was located eight miles northeast of Schuyler, twelve miles southwest of Charlottesville, moving north at twenty miles per hour, and that the radar indicated rotation. So it's not an actual hur- uh, uh, tornado at this point, but certainly the conditions are quite ripe, and they are urging that folks get to a basement or an interior room.
I'll leave it to you guys to decide what you need to do. I, I have no place to go. So, so whatever's good for you guys. I would recommend that we continue in folks that need to leave. You're, you're cool to leave. Missy, I hope, you, hope, are you in the van?
Yes, but I'm in an interior room.
Cool. Okay, okay. I'm not worried about you anymore. At least not as much. Okay, so um, Mr. Rice, next.
Sam Gulland is ready to speak. He is on the line.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Um, well, thank you. I, I just wanted to speak in favor of um, the increase in, in density um, for, I guess, a few reasons. First, I, I, I think it's kind of crazy that um, you know, you could build a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot home on a lot, and you couldn't build a, you know, two fifteen-hundred-foot duplexes. Um, that just strikes me as a, you know, a crazy idea. Um, and, and second, I really do think it would go a long way um, in improving affordability in Charlottesville. Um, I've heard some people say, you know, this is not the complete solution. Um, you know, density is not going in itself to bring all the affordable housing that we want, and, and that may be right. Um, but as somebody who, who wants to buy a house in the city and kind of, you know, looks at houses being sold for crazy prices, um, I think, do, you know, duplexes are obviously more affordable. Um, units, smaller units are obviously more affordable. Um, you know, as somebody who rents in Belmont, I heard a, a gentleman speak who said the best thing about Belmont is that it's, you know, has the detached single-family dwellings. Um, and I totally disagree. You know, I happen to live on a street where I've made friends from multiple generations. And I don't think that would be the case if all of the houses conformed uh, to the R-one. Um, I, I love that there are, you know, duplexes and smaller units, and um, I have loved that, and I like Belmont and would love for more people to be able to enjoy it. Um, you know, I, I thought there were some good comments on specific areas. I, I do support, you know, the medium-density and higher-density zoning. Um, and I hope that the planning commission will um, you know, give good thoughts to those comments, but I'll also say that um, I think you all could take five more years with this, and there will still be people that just found out about it and people that want it to slow down. Um, so I encourage you to, you know, listen to the good comments that have been made. Um, but also to, you know, to act in the near future. Um, and thanks again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. We've got.
Yep, we have uh, Emily Cohn Miller, then Kimber Hocke, then James Chang. And we also have Michelle Rowan, who has her hands up, who did speak previously. And right now, we have Emily Cohn Miller. Emily, you're on with the planning commission.
Hi, I'm on my phone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for all of their hard work. I also am astounded by how much work has gone into this. Um, like other callers before me, I am also calling in support of increased density, like other people who've spoken recently. I think density is a good both for communities and for the environment. Um, I also really wanted to say something about how important it is to reckon with what we're losing by not increasing density in our city, because I think that the people who've called in, who are afraid of what a denser city looks like, are only thinking about what they lose when, if the city character changes, but they're not thinking about what's already being lost, and that is that people have to live elsewhere, and their lives are made very, very hard by having to live elsewhere. People have insane commutes because they can't afford to live in a city. And um, I think it would be very humane of us to decide as a community that that's not acceptable. Uh, those people, if they want to live in Charlottesville, can live in Charlottesville, and um, so instead of just focusing on the loss of what you already know and love about a place, it would, I think it's important to think about what's being lost by not ma- making changes to that place that would make it um, a more humane place for people to live. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Kimber Hocke, followed by James Chang. Kimber, you're on.
Welcome, Kimber. We've been missing you. Hey, Kimber, you need to unmute. Hey, Kimber, unmute, please.
We will come back to Kimber. And we are all with James Chang. James, you're on with the planning commission.
Welcome, James. And yep, there you go. We got you. Thanks.
Well, first of all, thanks for all of your hard work. I know, no good deed goes unpunished. Sure you got, um, anyway, thanks for staying up late and for listening to everybody. Um, I don't want to speak just for the sake of speaking. I actually thought that I had um, unvolunteered myself, but I am with the um, Metis Neighborhood Association, and so I just, one thing I did want to say is um, I just found out about this for better or for worse. And um, I did see that there's high-density um, plan for our neighborhood, so I just wanted to say that I'd like to kind of hear from uh, our neighborhood residents and then get back to you all in terms of, you know, what everybody thinks about it. So I can't say anything at this point because I haven't talked to anybody, but just kind of wanted to let you know that I, I would like that opportunity for, for our neighborhood to be heard that way. Um, other than that, again, I, I don't want to speak just for the sake of speaking, so thanks for all that you're doing. And um, I'm sure, I'm sure that you're doing it with the best of intentions and, and um, I appreciate everything. Take care.
And, and thank you, and um, there'll be a couple more opportunities to speak to us or write us before we, we make a recommendation to council, so. Um, Mr. Rice?
We will try to go back to Kimber Hocke. Kimber, are you with us?
Unmute, Kimber. You done mute your phone, Kimber, please? Can't get that phone unmuted for some reason.
So we do have two other speakers who did speak before, uh, Michelle Rowan and Kevin Hildebrand. I'll defer to you, Chair.
I'll give them one minute each.
And first.
I'll watch you clock.
We have Michelle Rowan. Go ahead, Michelle.
One minute, please.
Yes, thanks for having me. And, you know, as you know, my husband and I are very new to town. And as you know, we have just found out about this change in zoning. Um, it was not the responsibility of our realtor, and if you ask all up and down our har- our road, people didn't know about it. I'm not the only one. So I'd love to know how you guys hold yourselves accountable for the lack of numbers in the response and to be able to say that you did, guys did a thorough job of canvassing the residents since there's, it's pervasive that people didn't know. We'd like to know how you plan on doing the affordability. Who gets it? How are you doing it? Who develops it? Who maintains it so that the perimeter that is higher density doesn't become shambles and devalue the, the people that have ownership here? That's a valid point. We have invested in a home here. That's not, there's no shame in that.
Understood, and thank you. Mr. Rice?
And next, we have Kevin Hildebrand, uh, with one minute.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to uh, respond to the younger generation that is so eager for the older generation to move out of Charlottesville. I was born and raised here. Uh, my parents bought this house on Cherry Avenue for eleven thousand dollars in nineteen fifty-five. My neighbors just bought their, uh, the neighboring house. They paid four hundred thousand dollars for the same house that my parents paid eleven thousand dollars for in nineteen fifty-five. Uh, great for me if I ever choose to sell it, but my dad lived to ninety-two. I'm sixty-one, so Charlottesville is going to have to put up with me for at least another thirty years, I hope. So don't count me out just because I'm old. Um, I'm, I'm for density. I just want it to be done in a responsible, reasonable manner. Uh, and I'm totally for diversity. Um, having spent a lot of my professional career in Washington DC, I'm very used to a diverse city. So thank you guys for sticking it out tonight, and um, I look forward to how the process moves forward.
We are hoping to see you on a Smucker's jar on NBC Center.
And it looks like Kimber tried to log in again. We will try her one more time. Kimber, you're on with the planning commission, are you there?
Show us going over that.
Try the other one, she has logged on, looks like.
Hey, Kimber, you unmuted. Alright, so. Hey, hey.
There was no way to unmute. There was no little doohickey showing up anyways.
We got you.
It's not the, there's actually other issues that I wanted to point out, technological. I was not, we, people have not been able to access the materials on the drive because it's blocked. I have a screenshot I can send people. There are other people who have not been able to log in as well tonight for some reason to all this. So I'm hoping, I mean, I'm assuming they will contact you in other, other ways. There's just so much to be said. Well, I, you know, there is a problematic divide, as people have said, between young and old and homeowners and renters, it's problematic. I think there needs to be more understanding all the way around. You know, the one guy said, well, our month, our rents go up, you know, every month or every year, whatever. Well, our taxes go up a lot, our property taxes go up every year. And we have not seen a lot of extra services for those, you know, thousands of dollars of increases every year. And we've actually seen an added tax for runoff because of the large increase in development that has caused more rainwater runoff. So our costs, we have costs as well. I, I guess, you know, as you well know by now with me, there's a, there's a lack of faith in what this city is doing as far as affordability goes. And so I would like to suggest, as in someone else had suggested as well, more of a surgical approach where you access properties that are all of, already available to create those four thousand units that are needed and gain some community faith that it can be done well and nicely. I'm very concerned about the environment and about tree canopy and, you know, you know, there are opinions on both sides. But from what I have seen personally in the city is a large destruction, destruction of trees and tree canopy. I.e. the new tax for the runoff. And I've also seen many false promises made from developers who have not created the, the affordable housing they claim to provide. And so I object to these accusations of people being fearful. We're not fearful, we're acting upon what we've already seen in Charlottesville, what I've seen for the past twenty years. I also wanted to say that it's a little bit, what, I don't want to say Pollyanna, but oh, well, that, that thing that you're going to walk to buy vegetables in your neighborhoods. We have not seen such things, for example, in the Belmont Center. Where we were supposed to have, you know, the butcher baker candlestick maker to provide services to the neighborhoods, and what we got were a lot of noisy restaurants and problems. Infrastructure problems from that, and that's one of the big points, we do not have at this point the infrastructure for all its development. Provide the infrastructure first and then do the development. It just seems to be logical. Alright, that's all I gotta say. Thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job. All the best.
Thank you very much. There's one person left, has this person already spoken tonight?
Not that I could tell, but I guess Rory could confirm that.
So let's, let's, this, this, this will be the last call, and then we will like turn it over to the commissioners, so.
And we have Charlotte Meadows, and you're on with the planning commission.
Oh, Charlotte.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good night.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to have a chance to talk. And I would like to address the, the fact that there is no analysis of any sort of developer intentions whatsoever. So the whole newer proposition of the land use plan gives the developers a lot more room to maneuver. And we have no idea what they're going to do with it. And there is no accountability. So we need to understand the developers' intentions versus a can-do sort of concept with economics. So if you look at the cost of building economically, developers have to build way above marginal costs because guess what? They need to make money, and that's what they want to do, is to make money. It's not about the good of Charlottesville or for diversity or for affordability or equity. It is about money for the developers. And so when you look at a minimum cost for units that would cost twenty-two-hundred thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand with rents of between eighteen-hundred to two thousand dollars per unit per month, that's well, well above anybody that can afford. And so you have an income of twenty to thirty thousand dollars. So you, you, you say that you think a person can pay eighteen hundred dollars a month? You know, they may as well try to fly to Mars. For that matter, so it's just something that we really need to hold them more accountable. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that I read an article in Seaville last week about Charlottesville's desirability for living, and it was put in there from realtors saying that a lot of people from Northern Virginia are moving here because they don't want the crowds, they don't want the density, they don't want the noise, they don't want the traffic. They want more green space, they want the more relaxed living. They like the fact that Charlottesville is calmer, quieter, we've got good schools. They are a little crowded. It, it would be more. So Charlottesville is a desirable place because it is so beautiful. And here we are talking about trying to kill the golden goose. We, we really need to think about ways to think outside of the box to achieve more of the goals that we really actually do want. So thank you very much for the time. I really appreciate your efforts and all of this. Good night.
Thank you very much, and it looks like there's one more person, and then Mr. Rice, if you would, Mr. Rice, if you cut it off after that, that'd be great.
Sure, and Mary has spoken with before, so we'll, we'll give her one minute.
Yep, cut it off after that.
You're on, Mary.
Unmute. Okay, guys, I just want to say hello again. I've stayed up all this time, I've listened to all the comments. I just, I just want you guys to listen a little bit to the tone of the comments that's being made. The assumption is that if you live in, in a single-family home, you, you don't work hard, you don't have children, you're greedy. Lyle, you used the word disgusting to refer to people. So if I came on and I said some people are disgustingly poor, would that be appropriate? Okay? So guys, other people have a story, they care about their homes with regards to the old-young thing. When I was young, I lived in crummy apartments. Every single person around me did too, and they're saying I started off in a small place, it wasn't good, and I've worked my way up. And the assumption seems to be from you guys that we've either stolen or been given our single-family homes. And it's just not true. People have worked hard, they've gotten to where they are. You know, have a little bit of respect for the other side of the story. I know y'all are ideologues. But please have some respect, we are people with families, with homes. I heard that woman say, oh, I notice everyone else isn't busy. At the time I was doing the meeting, I cooked dinner for my family, I helped my son with his homework, I folded the laundry after a day of work. And the assumption is, I'm some rich jerk.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to end the public comment section of this meeting. And what I'd like to do with the permission of the commission is give Jenny and her team an opportunity to make any responses they feel they need to make. If there are any, if they're not, that's cool. If there are, give them a chance to like respond to stuff or provide input. And then turn it back over to you guys, and we'll go left to right for any further input.
Uh, I've been taking notes of everything that's been discussed from both the community input and from you all. And I don't know that we have specific.
Yeah, yeah, I totally understand.
But I want to make a commitment to where we've heard what you have said, you are planning commission. So we are certainly looking to take direction from, from what you said.
Okay, so then with that, let's go from left to right, and I did Bill leave? Because I totally forgot to ask Bill for his input, he left today. Darn it. I forgot to ask when he thought. Also, we'll go to Liz, I remember Ms. Russell. Any input for these guys? Is Liz still here? She's here. Oh, yeah, mute.
No, it's been a long night, we've heard a lot of input. You know, clearly, we, we don't want to maintain the status quo. Because that has served to disadvantage certain people at the benefit of others in the community in the world. And we're working on getting that, getting that balance. And I think we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Mister, I miss Mr. Stolzemberg.
Yeah, thank you. I think I have my thoughts together a little bit more now. And I kind of, or yeah. So some people have said tonight, talked about this idea of trickle-down to those at the bottom, we build more housing. I think Mr. Leandro said it. But what we have right now, the status quo, is this game of just shoving out everybody at the bottom. Because as Ms. Massey said and some other commenters, I think the people who have the means can buy the homes. They, they can outbid the people below them for rent. If you have a home that's relatively affordable, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, you have a potential buyer who can afford a house at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and then you have another potential buyer coming in from Nova who can afford a house at four-hundred thousand dollars, that person who's coming in wins. And then that person who lives here, who can afford that house at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, gets shoved out. It's a game of musical chairs, and they're not sitting at the end. And the only way to solve that is to change it from a zero-sum game with a fixed amount of homes to a positive-sum game where we can create more homes. And I think we can do that in a way that not only minimizes impacts, but benefits the neighborhoods that are seeing additional homes come to them. And I, I do believe that density is a boon to the neighborhood, that more neighbors are good. I'll even go so far as to say that density, for density's sake, is good. It gets you the feet on the ground to support neighborhood services, to support transit. It has ecological benefits of having shared walls and lower heating and cooling losses, having shorter commutes. If we want to hit our climate goals, we absolutely need to have more people living in the city and stop forcing people out to Green Flavon. That said, you know, if you're creating new density, you're creating lots of value. And I think affordability is an important component of that because we can capture that value. But you have to do it in a way where you're incorporating these incentives and this required inclusionary zoning in a way that pencils. And I feel like the latest changes to the map in many cases make it so that any housing that isn't a single-family house is not going to pencil in many of these neighborhoods. There's no way a triplex is going to outbid a detached house when that detached house is seven hundred thousand dollars or more, which is what almost all of the houses in some of these neighborhoods that have had medium intensity removed from them have been. So, you know, I echo Lloyd's call, or Councilor Snopes' call for pro formas to, to see how it'll actually work, and I think that needs to be done. And if it's scheduled for later as part of the zoning rewrite, I think that's okay. But if you're boxing yourself in now with these very rigid expectations, you're already losing. If, if it's, if it's, we're going to allow three units and then a fourth by, a fourth by right, if it's affordable, I can already tell you right now that does not pencil because there is no incentive. You're going to have to make all of your ground floor homes accessible, which is a good thing. And then you're going to have to make that fourth extra unit affordable, and then the developer who there's, whoever just said that is completely correct, is looking to make money, and that is their motive. They're not going to do it. And, and our job as policymakers is to set incentives so that these amoral profit-seeking entities that are developers do the things that we see as publicly beneficial. So again, I, I support the overlay as initially proposed back in, in June or July. And I think that means talking about having an inclusionary component as part of it, and then tweaking the dial on that inclusionary component by neighborhood, by doing pro formas to make it work. And I think that requires the flexibility now, I think it requires the all of general residential in these neighborhoods and not just on the corridors to be included because by capturing some of that value, you're reducing how much it's worth it, you're reducing the propensity to actually create new homes on those sites. And I guess I'd also add, I, I think Commissioner Ross, good point about demolition, we're not creating incentives to avoid demolitions. We could be giving an extra unit bonus if, if we're avoiding demolitions. And then, I mean, I, I think it's important to note that while it's certainly not ecologically viable or beneficial, to do a tear down and a rebuild is the same thing. If you are going to have a demolition, it's best for that to be many more units, right? And so you get the, the efficiency benefits of having many shared walls and, and a significant amount of more density. And so, you know, getting, if you get demolitions for a three or fourplex, you're really not benefiting very much ecologically. You get a demolition for a twelveplex, it kind of comes out okay, or at least better. And probably positive. Lastly, I think there's places in the city in this new plan, I mean, maybe this becomes less true if we do an overlay, but there's places like North Downtown, some of which is high-density in the twenty thirteen future land use map that are marked as general residential, and then the little, you know, where the actual high-density buildings are now, get just their lot changed. That's like the most high amenity place and, and mixed housing place in the whole city. I, I don't understand that. I mean, there's places like University Circle that are already mixed. I, I think we can do a lot better because the need is great, and the status quo is creating rapidly worse outcomes for the people in this city.
Commissioner Russell, I already got you, did I get you already? Okay, so Commissioner, Bob, sorry.
Thanks, Rory, I think that was well said, that covers a bunch of my points, I'll try to go through these as fast as I can. I think the first thing I wanted to say is kind of a general address that this has been a process that's been going on for four years and it has been public. It's not something that kind of sprung up. And Jenny, I know you and your team are hard at work on this. I want you to think of us more as a resource to help and encourage you to reset to planning commission members as you develop these changes to make sure we're on the right track. I think we have to get it right by the next meeting. And this is a general point, I think, to whoever is still listening, that I hope somebody like commissioners or staff can correct me on, but concerning the, you developed in Charles, developments in Charlottesville and tree canopies, street trees, traffic studies are all part of a new construction development site plan approval process. And, you know, those things are going to be tackled in that side of things, and also in the rezoning. That's where those surgical concerns and approaches will be addressed. And I hope that sounds right. It's the goal of the future land use map, I think, is a more something that as a guiding tool for the rezoning process that I, I know everyone here knows, but I'd want to reiterate that. And tree canopies and street trees will be part of that process. I also wanted to emphasize, a comment that said earlier in the day that students' lives that live in the city on a part of the city are, you know, kind of excluding those, I think students are an active part of the city, cost burdened or otherwise. I think students are an active part of the city, cost burdened or otherwise, and should be included um in the data as they have been. I anecdotally, you know, have, I'm now twenty seven and have lived in Charlottesville as a non-UVA student since I was twenty one years old. So those are, um, you know, when I'm thinking of that, I'm thinking of people such as myself that have been here. And um I als- I do agree with some of the resident um commentators earlier that this feels like a very divisive two-sided argument and it shouldn't be, I think, and I agree with that it shouldn't be. I think everyone should feel pride in helping our city get on the right track and correct some of its historical wrongs. And going to some uh points on the uh future land use map, I know that the affordable um unit feasibility study um or the study of, you know, what how many affordable units can happen um in a development is still in the works. I think our point in, or my earlier point in having more assertive language um regarding affordable housing and affordable units in those designations under general residential, medium intensity and other otherwise is to bake in something right now so that we don't lose track of that when we get into the rezoning and it doesn't drop off the table. So whatever language we can craft to have that as part of that process moving forward, I think would, that's that's what we're looking for. That's what I'm looking for. And reiterating earlier stuff, bringing in some of that middle housing, uh missing middle housing on page twenty six, I think. And possibly even live some kind of live work arrangements into the general residential and bringing back the three and a half stories. And bring back four stories or more to medium intensity. I think it makes sense that those aligned with the neighborhood nodes since that's, I think, around the same height. They kind of bleed into each other. That's most of what I have. I have some things that um some people had questions on that Jenny, I don't know if you it's really late, but we can address it now or in later meetings. And it was explaining how multimodal at medium intensity makes for safer traffic. I think that was a question we had earlier. The other one is explaining the meaning of house sized and um is that a placeholder um that will be a part of the zoning rewrite?
Our recommendation would be that you uh email Jenny, copy the commission, Missy, Alex, and all of this.
Okay, the last, the last thing I had uh was explaining um why zoning diagrams are not done right now and the role and the the role of the comp plan um and where those come in. Um, as you have done a little bit today, but I think there was some confusion on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good stuff. Um, Ms. One question for you, Mr. Bob, is uh the um the question you had about spaces in uh echinal spaces. Are you comfortable with where the complaint is on that?
I think a big part of that comes down to the affordability of neighborhoods and um so should come into play when we look at those um those areas. Um, so I I would say for now, yes, but I have to take a closer look at it.
So I I'm thinking that you're thinking that once we start writing the zoning ordinance, so we need to make sure that we.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mr. Dow, are you still here? Mr. Landra, are you still here? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hey, how you doing? I'm, I'll come, I'll come back to you, Mal. I'm sorry.
Oh, Lyle, go ahead.
Go ahead, Lyle.
Oh, I, everything that I'm going to say has been said by others, but I I can underline it and highlight it. Stacked townhouses, I think, are the killer app for affordable homeownership that as as far as I can tell from the developers that I'm talking to from from what I'm hearing from Hack, uh, that's the that that that's the killer app. Um, so if we can allow that where it does no harm, I I think there's a a real benefit to that. Um, if we ban it for most of the city, I think that's going to make it harder to achieve our goals. Um, so if we can get that in the plan and in in a clearer way, I think that's going to be helpful. I I think the graphics that we saw here were helpful. I I think more graphics would be helpful. I I think people are really struggling just like, you know, fourteen units. Oh, my God, that's gonna, you know, be bad. The a a big principle we talked about early on that we've, I I I'm not seeing in this map, this map is sort of uh odd um was sort of like uh facing like uh sort of newer business idea of buildings with roughly the same form facing each other uh on the street. I I do, that's not clear to me on the map. It maybe that you are doing that and it is there and I'm just not seeing it. But if it could be, or if it already is, that would be lovely. Uh, and and I don't mean to call anyone disgusting. I was describing a housing type, not not a person type. All people are beautiful to me. Housing, not so much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura. So um now, Mr. Landra.
Um, really nothing more, much more to add. Uh, I I believe, though, that uh existing housing or existing zoning already allows for uh quite a bit of additional housing density. Um, and so I think our focus really should be on adding affordable housing. And the only other thing I have to ask is, are we getting guys on his duty pay for serving during a tornado warning?
They don't even give us free food anymore.
Say, okay, so um what I'm good at is dum- dumbing things down for us so that I can understand. So density for the sake of density is dumb. Density that uh privileges affordability is smart and the overlay supports density for the sake of privileging density. So I would ask the consultants like to to give some more thought to the overlay. Absolutely, I agree that we cannot do the overlay to the degree that um the hack wants to do it. I understand that. But I think we can be a little more aggressive than we 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 we've been. The other point I would make is that uh we do all that. We still have to protect the uh the uh the sensitive areas and we cannot delay. Um, as our friends from uh Liverpool, Charlotte have said, delaying the same only uh makes the same worse. We we get, we gotta keep moving. We gotta, we gotta get something out there. And we gotta get something out there with the knowledge that whatever we put out there will be an iterative document that we can revise as we move forward. So don't let this set you guys back. Get something out there. I want something this council can, that we, this commission can recommend and this council can vote on and we can move forward to get into the zoning stuff.
Understood. Uh, if I may briefly, uh, I think we can respond to um some of the questions as uh Prue was mentioning or, you know, I'm gonna pull up the key questions I've heard from here that we haven't already put into the FAQ. And I think we'll maybe add them to that document we we put out today uh or create a similar document, whatever we ever will, will help, but uh we'll try to respond to some of those um larger questions.
And for the record, Commissioner Bob, uh, we're well past four and a half years uh into this process at this point. Um, I was twenty five years old uh when it started and before we meet again, I will be thirty.
Yeah. So um before we begin shutting down, is there any counsel from council? I've been counsel.
I I don't really have anything to add uh this late in the evening that hasn't already been said.
The only thing that I wanted to add is that I think that a lot of the questions that people have had about, you know, why ha- why haven't we, why don't we have more information about uh what has worked for affordable housing and so on, is that that's another part of another batch of information we will be getting uh for an expenditure of another hundred and five thousand dollars. But we will, in fact, be getting uh an assessment of the programs that we've already got. A count, I hope, of the number of affordable units that we've got and that we've generated. And so some of those questions will be answered. I think that to say, gee, we should wait until we have that information before we move forward assumes that the answers are going to be so clearly different from what we all know. The 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 reality on the ground is that it would change our minds or that it would change the initial phases of things that you all are doing. I'm assuming we'll have those answers before the final design would get to to city council in any event. So uh as Chair Mitchell has said, let's get this thing moving and let's let's get it done.
Thank you. Thank you very much for saying that. Thank you. Thank you. Any else? Cool. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I I'd just like to add, um, Fisher about did something about uh reaching out to us, talking. I I would really appreciate it if we got guidance of of where you were looking to go moving forward. I mean, if we have one work session left to get this done, like I I feel like in the past, like the we have a work session, we wait three months, uh, we have another, we get another draft, we get another work session. We get five minutes to speak and then another draft gets kind of dropped on us last minute. And I mean, I I think, you know, if if we're getting a wholly different draft being dropped on us six days before we're supposed to vote on it, um, that's not gonna be conducive to getting a successful vote.
That's a, that's a, Rory, thank you. That's a great question. And that's for uh our our HI to answer. Is that for the consultant?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Or just a request and not a question.
Yeah, well, um, we'll come with NDS on what the best process will be for that. But um I agree that that this, we need to give you all something, have time. So appreciate the note from uh Mr. Bob as well about reaching out.
But Miss Creasy, um, and and Mr. Alex or whoever, Miss Creasy, is there a chance before we get the next uh document that we have to um vet publicly? Is there a chance to like vet it? I know we have this stuff publicly, but is there a chance to vet it before we vet it in the like a meeting like this?
Well, let's let's uh, let's, let's discuss with the consultants. You know, we usually uh have a a check in, you know, and then we ponder through uh questions from the council, the from planning commission, and then we get back to you.
I I think the 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 challenge we had tonight was maybe it was me, but I think my 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 colleagues and Dyess felt the same way. We advised going one way and the document another way. And had we had a chance to like consult before we were out in the public again, we could have help, we could could have coached our consultants to avoid some of the things we experienced tonight.
Yeah, I think uh.
Do you guys agree? Those are safe, these guys, you guys are, yeah.
Yeah.
Guys are like totally off guard, got off guard with this, yeah.
Yeah, I think the direct, the direction you provided tonight is pretty clear. So we discussed with the consultant and uh uh integrate as much as we can, you know, in the next document.
There may be value in um maybe you, Alex and Miss Creasy and Lyle and I talking sometime next week about where we missed in articulating our desire to move in one direction and the other, because we, we, we clearly didn't connect with the consultants. We we, we missed the mark, I think, on this. They didn't, we did. We, not you guys, not you, Alex, or the consultants.
We schedule.
Lyle and I.
We schedule something next week.
Yeah. Cool.
Um, Chair, I just uh wanted to clarify something. What I said, like, reach, I don't mean any like polished document. I think if it's possible in this system that we have to, you know, pick up the phone or just send us an email or whatever it is and talk to us one-on-one or two-on-one or however we, whatever way it works best. Initially, before you even spend time to go deep down one route to have a presentable document for us. We can save time that way since we're trying to get this done. Uh, thanks.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm cool with that. I'll leave that allows him to make a decision, but yeah. Cool.
I'd like to make a motion.
Out of here.
I move to adjourn.
Adios.
I'd like a second.
Peace out.
Thank you all.